Good morning and welcome to the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners meeting this Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. An announcement before we called order, the public will be able to comment immediately following the public hearing presentations from planning and zoning and also during the public comment section of the agenda by calling 307-872-3891 or by sending comments ahead of time via email to publiccomments@sweet.wi.us. Good morning Commissioners, I'll call this meeting to order. We do have a forum present, please stand and join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To approve the agenda, we do have some adjustments Commissioners. First of all, we'll remove TAB D and E. TAB D is the tax year 2020 mill levy approval that it will be scheduled for our next meeting was requested to be removed. And then also TAB E, the presenter for Southland Royalty Company at the Lorme Payment Schedule, requested that this topic be removed, they weren't ready, so that'll be at the next meeting. So there's a request to remove TAB D and E. Also to add to the agenda between TAB L and M, we will add TAB LB. And this will be bids for the full data center enclosure. And then under other, there will be a discussion of recent legislative change to the Wyoming statute concerning family exemptive exemption subdivisions and Mr. Bingham will bring that aboard, it's a very important issue for the community. And then under executive session, legal updates. Would anybody like me to repeat any of that Commissioners? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments.
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaneville. Any further discussion Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next agenda item is the approval of the July 7th, 2020 minutes. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Smith.
I move that we approve the July 7th, 2020 minutes as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve as presented, the minutes from July 7th, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next agenda item is the acceptance of the bills, which is the approval of the county vouchers warrants, approval of the bonds, and approval of the monthly reports. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I would approve that we approve the monthly, the approval of the county vouchers warrants, approval of bonds, and the approval of monthly reports as presented.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second that, not as painfully as the motion, but I'll second it.
Thank you Commissioner Smith, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, I got a feeling it's gonna be a rough morning for Commissioner Lloyd.
We can start early with them and go late, it's no problem.
Bring it on.
Okay, our first agenda item, or not first, but moving on, we have public hearings for planning and zoning. We have, I believe, six of them this morning. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Commissioner, or not Commissioner, we'll turn the floor over to our Pioneering Zoning Director, Eric Bingham, Eric?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, so we have six hearings today, five of these are cell tower expansions and, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, excellent. So, all of these are existing towers, just to give you a general overview of what you see on the agenda here. The last hearing is going to be a conditional use permit for a concrete batch plant. So, what I'm going to do is, as I go through these hearings, a lot of these are very similar, they are, so I'll be going through them pretty rapidly unless you need me to slow down and go over a few of them. So, the first hearing we have is a conditional use permit for Union Wireless, Hemp Hill, Declan Murphy is the applicant. The location of this, let me just pull it up here, right here is between Green River and Rock Springs, it's that cell tower off to the north side of the interstate as you're driving over. Union Telephone is looking at increasing the height of their towers from 35 to 100 feet. So, when you're within the growth management area, which these, all of these towers are, there are some towers outside the GMA that are just a regular construction permit, but these ones do require conditional use permit approval and that's what we're here today to discuss. Again, here's an aerial photography of the location, here's the existing building, existing lattice tower, propane tank, and the existing access road to the site. There's an overall site plan, as again I stated, this is going to extend to 100 feet this tower. When we go through the growth, anytime we go through the conditional use process, we have to make sure that it meets all our criteria, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? This is gonna be a general statement for all the towers, the addition of the tower will provide better cell coverage for Sweetwater County and so staff sees this as a positive and encourages the approval of this request. One thing we look at, does it adversely affect adjacent properties? A lot of these cell towers, all of them are in very remote areas, there is one exception that we'll go over the Reliance Tower, which is close to a residential subdivision, but it's far enough away to not have any health concerns. Is this compatible, this tower, with existing allowable uses of adjacent property? This is where you see the towers, you see them on ridges, that way they can get the maximum coverage. Does it have adequate public facilities? These are exempt, unmanned communication facilities are exempt from the access standards, so they don't, they're not required to build fire access roads or any such to the site because they are unmanned. The, as far as adequate provisions, again, these are leased areas mostly and this one we see will meet all the setback requirements, this will be on Bureau of Land Management property and they have stated in the right of agreement that the impacts on the existing landscape will be minimal. Will it create any undue traffic congestion? No, it will not, this is, again, once they're done with construction, it's usually a monthly visit just to go up there and check on the cell tower, so we don't anticipate any traffic problems associated with this use. Will it adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare? We do not foresee any of that and it will conform to all the provisions of the zoning resolution such as setbacks. As far as comments that came in, Dominion Energy had no facilities and they do not indicate any problems with the permit. Emergency management approves the conditional use. Sweetwater County Engineering Site looks to have all easements in place and they do, they don't affect any of the county roads. The land use staff did not receive any other adverse comments during the last permit duration and in support of the request, respectfully requests approval. At the July 8th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the board voted five to zero to approve the request. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Eric. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Bingham?
Yeah Eric, I assume this improves the coverage for Union?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Eric, with this being a existing tower, is this expand the footprint at all or is it just expanding the height?
Just expanding the height of the tower.
Thanks.
Other questions Commissioners? Okay, with that, at this point, we'll open it up for a public hearing regarding the recommendation of 2.0-07-0-01 for approval of the conditional use permit for cell towers, so it's a public hearing. I'll open the floor now, public hearing is now open. Give a couple minutes in case anybody calls in. Eric, at your planning zoning meeting, did you have any public comments there?
Just from the applicant, Declan Murphy was on the call and just obviously spoke in support of it, I don't know if he's here or on the call, but you do have Ryan Schmidt that's on for Union representing if he has any additional comments.
Thank you. We have the floor open for a public hearing regarding this resolution. Anything coming in, Mr. Hart?
No, Declan is in the meeting right now.
With no comments, I need a third call for public comment. With no comments coming in, I will close the floor for public comment. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the approval of Resolution 20-07-0-01 for approval of the conditional use permit for a cell tower?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution as presented and I'd like to compliment Eric and his staff, that's a good presentation, documentation was well done.
Thank you Commissioner Johnson, it's noted, we have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd, any further discussion Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you. As that one, as the rest of them, Eric, they'll be done as well, I just know how you're doing things, so up next is the planning zoning issue number two with Union Wireless and again, it's a conditional use permit for a cell tower in Rock Springs East, Eric, the floor is yours.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, so this, this tower is located on ag, just like the other ones, it's also within the GMA, so requires a conditional use permit. I'll go to the map here, the location, this one here you can see is located on this parcel of land off of 430 is where it's located at. Again, it's increasing the height of the tower, the existing 30-foot tower remained for a period to facilitate the transfer equipment, so they're gonna leave that tower and calls for an 84-foot to the top of the antenna, so this one does, doesn't include the lightning round on top, the interior fenced area will increase from 50 by 50 to 50 by 100. The ownership again of this one is also Bureau of Land Management, just so you know, and I didn't mention it on the previous one, but all the ones that are on Bureau of Land Management do have the correct paperwork as far as right of way and lease agreements, those are all in place, so those all have been approved by the Bureau of Land Management. The, again, you can see the existing lattice tower, existing building, existing generator, access road into the site with the existing propane tank, again, what we're increasing here is the height of the tower. And there's the location, just the equipment that's on site, the detailed site plan, there's 430, there's this posting of the notice as required by statute, by regulations. Again, I won't go through each one of these because these are all extremely similar, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it does not affect adjacent property owners, it's in a remote area and as you see these in the county, this will be 100 by 100 foot lease area, so more than adequate for setbacks, it will not have any adverse effect on the natural environment since it's going into an existing site and an existing tower, again, it will not create undue traffic congestion, will not adversely affect public health, safety, and it conforms to the zoning resolution. Dominion Energy said the same, they don't have any facilities, they have no concerns, emergency management, they approve the request and Sweetwater County Engineering also stated that all the easements are in place and does not have effect on any county roads. Land use staff supports the request at the July 8th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the board voted five to zero to approve the request, Mr. Chairman, there's your resolute recommendation and then resolution. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, staff supports the request.
Thank you Mr. Bingham, very well done. Commissioners, any questions? With no question, at this point in time, I'll open up the floor for a public hearing on the recommendation of Resolution 20-07-0-02 of a conditional use permit for a cell tower. The floor is now open for public comment. Floor is open for public comment. Regarding cell tower for Rock Springs East. Seconds go by slowly with all the silence. Last call for public comments regarding the cell tower for Rock Springs East. Anything Mike?
No comments here.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding Resolution 20-07-0-02 for approval of a conditional use permit for a cell tower?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shaneville?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
You have a motion to accept the resolution as presented, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner, or second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving on, we have next up, a, with Union Telephone Company, we have a conditional use permit for a cell tower for Rock Springs West, Mr. Bingham, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you Mr. Chairman, so this one, the applicant is Union Telephone with Kathy Campbell as the applicant and the address is H70 White Mountain Road, so this is on the top of White Mountain, is the location of this, this is the Rock Springs West cell tower, again, increasing the overall height of the tower, here is a, there you go, there is a map of the location of where the cell tower is and you can see kind of up to the north there, that's Gookin White Mountain Road is the location, you go up that road and then turn left on White Mountain Road and it's one among many cell towers on the top of White Mountain, so that's the location of the, of this site and looking again to expand it, there's the, there's the proposal to increase this again to 100 feet, the tower to increase cellphone coverage and there is to the north, south, east, and west of the location and the posting of the public hearing. Again, it's consistent with comprehensive plan, we don't see any adverse effects to adjacent properties, it's around similar uses, since it's on the top of the ridge there, there's other cell phone towers located up there, has adequate, it's exempt from the provisions of public, the fire code, it has adequate provisions for setbacks, there's no minimum adverse effects, this is on BLM also and they have the right of way, power line will be buried on this one, will not create undue traffic congestion, will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare, and it conforms to all the provisions of the zoning resolution. Emergency management had no objections. As far as Sweetwater County Engineering, the applicant states that Union will cross RSGA with a power line for a distance of 8508, 8,580 feet. I do not see any permits, agreements, licenses for the crossing of RSGA in the application, please provide documentation, proper documentation for easement was provided, so that comment came out and the Union Telephone did provide the necessary documentation, so without any adverse comments, staff supports the request and at the July 8th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the board voted to approve the request as recommended by staff, five to zero. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Mr. Bingham, questions for Mr. Bingham Commissioners? Question? With there being no questions, at this time, we'll open up a public hearing for the recommendation of Resolution 20-07-0-03, which is a conditional use permit for a cell tower for Rock Springs West. The floor is now, public hearing is now open on the conditional use permit for cell tower Rock Springs West. Mr. Hart, any comments?
No comments have come in.
All right, at this time, we'll have a third call for public hearing. Public hearing is now called, closed regarding the Resolution 20-07-0, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding Resolution 20-07-0-03 for approval of a conditional use permit for cell tower Rock Springs West?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shaneville?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented by Commissioner Shaneville, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd, any further discussion Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you. Eric, you're up for the fourth hearing on a conditional use permit cell tower on Gun Ridge. Mr. Bingham, floor is yours.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, this one is actually on private land, this is on Rock Springs Grazing Association. The applicant is Union Wireless, Declan Murphy, and the location of this tower is, whoops, there we go, it's on the top, so as you're driving on the top of the belt loop there in Rock Springs, if you look off to the east, you'll see a cell tower and that is the location of this tower, again, it's located on Rock Springs Grazing Association. This area that you see right here, wherever the hand is on the, on the PowerPoint, or on the PowerPoint slide here, is private property and the only issue with, as far as all the towers went, was this one where they are still obtaining the necessary easements, this is private property that they are going across to access the site, this is an existing cell tower site, but just so you know, the applicant is in contact with them and they are working on getting the proper easements for that. This, again, here's the location of the existing generator and building and the tower and the existing access road that goes into the site and there's an existing propane tank also on site. Again, this just shows you the equipment layout of the detailed site plan and the photos of the location of the, of the tower located on the top of this ridge. Again, same, same thing, as far as consistent with the comprehensive plan, that will not adversely affect adjacent properties, it's in a very, it's in a remote area, there are other, there's another tower up there on the way up there, has adequate public facilities, provisions for maintenance of use, and it will not have any adverse effects on the natural environment, an existing site, will not create undue traffic congestion, that will not affect public health, safety, and welfare and conforms to the zoning resolution as far as setbacks go. So, as far as county engineering, they had a, had a comment, on the access road does go through two private property owners, it's DECO Corp. and Magna Investment and Development LTD, I do not see any access documentation allowing you to access the BLM parcel through their land, please provide the documentation, emergency management had no objections to the permit. So, what you'll see on this and on your recommendation and resolution, staff recommended the following condition, that they provide access documentation through the two private property owners, DECO and Magna Investment and Development LTD, and at the July 8th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission, approve the request as with the condition recommended by staff, five to zero. So, Mr. Chairman, you'll see on the recommendation that condition on there, approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, five to zero, and then you have the condition prepared for you on your resolution. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Mr. Bingham. Commissioners, any questions? Any question? Thank you. At this point, we will open up the public hearing for the cell tower. In the, we have the open for public hearing for the cell tower, conditional use permit for cell tower Gun Ridge. Anything come in, Mr. Hart?
No, there's no comments here.
Thank you. Third notice, public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding Resolution 20-07-0-4, which is approving a conditional use permit for a cell tower on Gun Ridge and the condition that is that the cell tower company provide access documentation through the two property owners as listed. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve Resolution 20-07-ZO-04. I move that we approve resolution two zero dash zero seven dash Z O dash zero four, uh, which is a conditional use permit for a cell tower with the, uh, also, um, with the included condition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion, Commissioner? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is our next hearing on Union Wireless. And it's a conditional use permit, cell tower, Reliance West. Mr. Bingham.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is the last cell tower. And we're here today, this is the property owner is BLM. And this one is located uh, in the Reliance area is where you can see this tower. And it's on agriculturally zoned property within the GMA. Again, this is increasing the height of the tower. Here is the location of the cell tower, so you can see there's the Reliance Road as it comes into Reliance and the trailer park located uh, through that. And then the location of this site is uh, down here on agriculturally zoned property. And this kind of shows you right there, uh, aerial, with the aerial photography, the location of the, uh, quite a ways away from the, the mobile home park. And then this is located up here on the ridge there. For cell coverage over there along one ninety-one. And the location of the east, north, south and west. And then there's the uh, actual posting of the sign. Um, as far as same thing, uh, this will increase cellphone coverage in the area. Does not adversely affect any adjacent property owners. It's far enough away from the trailer park, do not have any adverse effects. Has adequate provisions, facilities, uh, will meet all the setback requirements. Will not have any adverse effects on the natural environment. Will not create undue traffic congestion. And will not adversely affect public health, safety and conforms to the zoning resolution. Sweetwater County Engineering had a comment. The two-track roadway and power line corridor that Union is going to use to access the towers partially on BLM property and on Regency of Wyoming property. I don't see any access easements, permits or agreements in the application that allows Union to cross Regency of Wyoming property with the power line or roadway. Please provide documentation. And just for your knowledge, Mr. Chairman, I've met with county engineering and there wa, there is, uh, the applicant did provide documentation. They have all of the proper documentation for both the power line and for access through Regency of Wyoming property to the site. And they also have BLM approval. Emergency management had no objections to the conditional use permit. So Land Use Department supports the request, Mr. Chairman. And at the July eighth, twenty twenty Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the board approved the, as recommended by staff, five to zero without conditions. There's the recommendation. And then, Mr. Chairman, there is the resolution. And staff supports the request, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Commissioners, any questions regarding the conditional use permit for cell tower, Reliance West? No questions, uh, at this time, I'll open this up for public hearing regarding the conditional use permit for cell tower, Reliance West. Public hearing is open. Second call for any comment, public hearing. Mr. Hart, any comments come in?
No comments.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed regarding public comment for the conditional use permit for cell tower, Reliance West. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding resolution two zero dash zero seven dash C O dash zero five is a conditional use permit for cell tower, Reliance West?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Make a motion to approve.
Have motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd, any further discussion, Commissioner? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I believe next up in the planning zoning is the conditional use permit for a concrete batch plant. Mr. Plant, I'm sorry, Mr. Bingham, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the property owner is Key Rock Mountain, Inc., DBA, Key Energy Services. And the applicant is R and N Investments. Matt Beboud is the, the representative. The legal description is in the P M L Industrial Park, Lot six, I'm portion of Lot five. Three ninety-five Blair Town Road is the location. And it says, again, it's zoned I one, infrastructure, uh, Fire District one, it's Rocky Mountain Power, U S one ninety-one, and then it comes off the Blair Town, Blair Town Connector Road, County Road fifty-one. Uh, the purpose of this is to consider conditional use for a batch plant. Any of the batch plants that ever come in to Sweetwater County, they are required to have a conditional use permit. So that's why we're hearing that today. It'll be on three point seven four acres of land owned by Key Energy. And again, it's on a portion of Lot five and Lot six of the P M L Industrial Park. It will be a portable concrete batch plant. Um, a lot of the work that they do is the A M L projects, just so you're familiar of what they do. The uh, production estimates are around eighty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five tons per year. Um, and the applicant has obtained an authorization letter from D E Q air quality. And so one thing Commissioners need to be aware of, especially when we do batch plants, whether they're concrete or asphalt, air quality is the key uh, in obtaining permits, uh, as these plants move around. Air Quality Division considers this portable batch plant, um, this is in their permit and it states that it'll be insignificant in emission rate. So this will be, there's the location. So here is the intersection of Cruel Jacks. And as you come down south, down one ninety-one, this is the locate of, of where the conditional use for the concrete batch plant. As you're, if you've been down in that area, as you're going down towards the Justice Center, this is that industrial park that's located off, uh, as you're heading down one ninety-one. It's on the west side of the road, so to your right. And you'll see uh, quite a bit of heavy industrial activity. That's where we like to see these batch plants. Either in a very remote area, on ag property, or you see it on heavy industrial or light industrial property as, as noted here. Surrounding uses, you've got Lewis and Lewis here who's got asphalt, uh, asphalt batch plant, very close proximity. And then you have Sunrock that has a concrete batch plant. So uh, it's in an area with similar uses. Right here where that pin is, it's kind of hard to see in yellow there, right where I'm holding, hovering over here with the hand on here, that's the location of where this like, uh, temporary, or not temporary, excuse me, uh, batch plant will be, portable batch plant will be. And then this is the area to the north and to the south and to the west and east. Uh, as far as consistent with the comprehensive plan, it'll be, you'd like to encourage new industrial development adjacent to existing industry. As stated previously, it will be, it'll be located around very similar uses. As far as adversely affecting adjacent property owners, of course, with these type of uses, air quality is concerned. And D E Q has stated this will be an insignificant emission. Uh, is it compatible with existing land uses? And yes, it'll be around similar uses. Does it have adequate public facilities? This is located in an area that has all of the, uh, well, it has everything but public sewer. In the P M L Industrial Park, uh, there is no public sewer, they're all on septic. They re, they are in a water and sewer district, but they, they're in an extended area. The reason why those haven't gone on a sewer yet is because of the cost of crossing one ninety-one. So um, that's, but there is public water there, fire protection, all of that. The um, adequate provisions, they have obtained their D E Q quality permit. And uh, we, as far as traffic congestion goes, because of the location, uh, if, if the applicant utilizes the existing access, which they have proposed, the county engineer does not anticipate any undue traffic congestion. As far as adversely affecting public health, safety, where, welfare, um, these types of uses always require that they always continually maintain D E Q. D E Q is the enforcement agency on air quality on this. Conforms to the zoning resolution, it does meet all the setback requirements. So Sweetwater County Engineering, as far as agency comments, they have stated that um, no new access will be granted from the property onto County Road fifty-one, Blair Town Connector Road. The batch plant will need to use existing access to and from the property. The app, and then the second comment from the engineering was the applicant will keep mud, dirt and debris from being deposited on County Road fifty-one, Blair Town Connector Road. Those you'll see as a condition on the, on the recommendation and resolution. Emergency management had no objections and Y Dot had also no objections. So Land Use recommends approval with the following conditions as I just, just stated. And then at the July eighth, twenty twenty Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the board approved the request, uh, five to zero as recommended by staff. And as you can see on the recommendation, those two conditions as stipulated by engineering are on the recommendation and also on the resolution. And then I believe Mike Beboud is also on the call, Mr. Chairman, if he has any comments. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, staff supports the request.
Thank you. Um, Nick, at this time, uh, Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I don't have a question, but I'd just like to point out to my co-commissioners that the A M L projects in Sweetwater County have been very, very uh, beneficial to Sweetwater County, uh, both in the rural areas such as Reliance and uh, Superior. They've done an outstanding job and I strongly support this project.
Well noted, Commissioner Johnson, spot on. Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioners, any other questions? With that, I'll open up for public hearing regarding the uh, resolution two zero dash zero seven dash C O dash zero six, which is a conditional use permit for a batch plant with the two conditions as listed. So we're now open for public comment. We're now open, public hearing regarding this conditional use permit for a batch plant. Mr. Hart, anything coming in?
No comments.
All right. We'll give it a second or two. No comment for this public hearing, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding resolution two zero dash zero seven dash C O dash zero six, which is a conditional use permit for a batch plant and does have two conditions listed with it?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'd make a motion to approve the uh, request for a conditional use permit for a batch plant as presented.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented, which I'll mention includes the two conditions, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield, any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mo, uh, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you Commissioners and thank you Eric, that concludes our, uh, part of our agenda on planning, zoning, public hearings. Uh, any, uh, well done Eric, I'd like to thank you and your staff, very well done. And I would like to thank the participants. Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I'm not on the agenda, this is Eli Beboud, let me wear my Senator's hat for a second. Good, good to see all of you this morning.
Morning, Senator.
I asked you a question if I might, would it be possible?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and remember the commission, I, I'm just curious how things are going in Sweetwater County relative to the COVID? How you're experiencing the, the situations you have relative to funding? We're going to be talking about possibly having a special session. And of course, one of the things that's on our agenda might be cities, towns and counties, we got the one oh five funding out there and maybe do some more things with COVID, Lenny, have you given any thought to that or had any discussion relative to uh, if the legislature should have a special session? What, uh, what the opinion would be of you to, to look at maybe some COVID related funding for, for Sweetwater County or other twenty-two counties and cities in town?
Thank you, Commissioner, or thank you Senator Beboud. And our next agenda item was public comment, so we're just going to move you right in under that at this point. So with that, Commissioners, Senator Beboud's on, he asked for some input. Um, at this time, uh, any Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'd just like to comment that Senator Beboud has always been very, very supportive of Sweetwater County. We appreciate that and uh, we watch that very closely Eli, so thank you very much. And obviously, we're doing uh, a, a little better with uh, with the COVID, but uh, it, the trend is kind of negative here, but uh, appreciate all you're doing for us.
Mr. Chairman, thanks Wally, and, and you know, when we, you know, the good thing about Wyoming, we're in a position to be able to, to do some things relative to what other states can do. And of course, and you know for sure Wally, how I feel about, I think always the money spent closer to the people is the best way to spend money and that's with our cities, towns and counties. And so it'll be interesting to see the budget cuts we have, it's a real deal. We have a one point five billion dollar deficit and it's real. I, I, I'm going to have trouble cutting your one oh five. That's one of the things I think that probably should stay in place, but everything has to be on the table and I know you realize that. And of course, one of the big ones is K through twelve, so we'll see how it all goes. But this deficit is real and serious and it's going to have a long-term effect on all of us and we just got to deal with some tough issues. And I know you are there as well, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank, thank you Senator, other Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, yeah.
Thank you, uh, Senator, I, I, the one thing I guess I would press, and I, I know it's been a sticking issue for a very long time in the legislature is the expansion of Medicaid and the dollars that that can bring. And I know there's always the fear of it's going to go away and, and we'll be stuck with uh, trying to fund and take care of people that we've added to that program. But so far, the state's lost out on, you know, a billion dollars, I think, or, or some number like that. So sure, it'd be nice to um, consider it again, and I know it's not a popular topic, but um, certainly something that I think there's money out there to be had. And it should be sincerely considered in, in this, uh, in this session coming up.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that comment. And of course, Medicaid expansion has been an issue and there's been a lot of discussion about the benefits and the real, the real net results. And there's certainly good arguments that it brings a lot of money and helps people, and I wouldn't debate that. The issue we have right now with the Department of Health, which is, you know, next to schools, our largest budget, one point, what, eight billion dollars when you include the federal funds. And we look at two or three hundred million dollars with a general fund, that's uh, boy, to expand Medicaid right now would be a tough one to do. And we're looking at, you know, mental health and all these different areas where we just don't have the money. Of course, the interesting thing will be is, uh, you know, we can't cut our way out of this problem, I just don't believe that. And so we have to look at some revenue enhancements and, and I'm as conservative as anybody, I hate taxes, particularly a personal income tax and a corporate income tax. But the legislature's going to have to look at some revenues. You know, I don't know what it would be, maybe exemptions, uh, who knows? We just can't cut one point five billion, it's just going to be almost impossible. So it'll be interesting to see how we get through that, that issue. And then of course, Medicaid expansion is something that we should be considering if it works.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioners. Commissioner Shanefield, you had a comment?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, Senator, thank you so much for, for being here today with us. And I just wanted to say that I think that, um, although our, we are having a trend up in COVID um, with the, the disease itself, um, we are also preparing ourselves with some strategic planning and looking towards um, our future and how we can, you know, buckle our belts and, and keep ourselves where we need to be, um, cut. where we need to be, cut where we need to be as well. And I just, I appreciate the opportunity to be at the table. I'm also on the State Broadband Council and I think that there's some opportunity for some growth and development in that area as well across the whole state. So I appreciate, like I said, the opportunity to be at the table with you guys and have these conversations. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for those comments. And Mr. Chairman, you know, the thing, and I just got a report here a couple of days ago about the $1.25 billion that's been made available to Wyoming for COVID-related expenditures. And if we, if we go, if we started right now, the amount of money we spent to try to spend that money, we'd have to spend almost $50 million a week. And we're just not getting the money out the door. So any input you would have to the governor, to the legislature, if we have a special session, would be appreciated. The money's there, it's available, we really need it. We just got to get it out the door and we're just not quite doing it. So I think we really need to make a push. You know, we're talking about rural hospitals, all hospitals in the state of Wyoming, a lot of different things. So any help in that area would be appreciated if we have a special session.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're happy to help you spend the money. Any restrictions on it though, but we're happy to do our part, for sure.
There you go. I'll quote that. Sweetwater County's on board.
There you go. Commissioners, any other comments? I'll have a final comment or two, but I'll wait till the other commissioners are finished.
Yeah, Senator Bebaut, thanks for being with us today. Yeah, I just think, you know, like we said, we are kind of in a downward trend on the COVID. But I also think, kind of echoing what Commissioner Shanefield said, this is a great time to really look in our systems and find efficiencies and look at some strategic planning. But I think some of the things that I've seen that have been positive for us during this point is some of the changes we made when we shut down our building for a point in time to the public and was able to really start to put a lot of processes to be able to be done off-site. And I think as we can continue to find efficiencies in providing services outside of the, that used to be done through the county building as the primary way and finding ways to do it online and through other options, we're going to create a more efficient government. And I think so, even though the COVID's been difficult, I do think finding some efficiencies and challenging ourselves to find some efficiencies, because like you said, the deficit's real and at the state level, it's real. We saw it in our last budget. We have to start getting creative and looking outside of the box and how to move forward financially.
Thank you, Commissioner Woll. Any other commissioners? Thank you. Senator Bebaut, thank you for being here. Going back to your original question regarding the 105 and that type of thing, it's critical. I know it's up for grabs and that type of thing, but it's very critical because I think through this last session, as the statutes were changed for the 105, especially the percentages for the small towns, we found out that there were a huge number of our small towns where there was anywhere from 15 to almost, I would say, plus or minus 30% of those small town budgets depended on the 105 that we were getting and that type of thing. So it worries me to think that it may, that it, you know, maybe be being considered because I'm worried that it could be the knife to the heart of our small communities, especially to their budgets in order to carry forth and that type of thing. And also, I know that the other aspect that as we look down a long range with that, this 105 for the past couple of biennions, I believe, has come out of the LISRA, which is a rainy day account. And I think if anybody's been following that rainy day account, LISRA, they will know that that account has been diminished by nearly, not quite 50%. And with the rate that the legislature's drawn out of it, it could be empty in two years. And of course, we know the biggest draw on that probably is education. So going back to that issue, it concerns me that when that 105 is, if it's reduced or taken off the table, what's going to be there for many of those small towns and as well as cities and counties? And I hope as the legislatures work through that, they can at least find alternative revenue to resources for that revenue. And I agree with you, yeah, nobody likes new taxes, but the roughest part is, is through your body, the Senate, to get anything going, is my observation. And I wish you luck on that. And as we lose production taxes in our minerals throughout the county, which we all know support a huge percentage of state revenue as well as federal's just out of Sweetwater County, we need to replace some of those mineral taxes, production taxes and that. It might be wise to look at those that are paying delayed taxes or paying barely any in production as well as they grow and that type of thing. And I think the Senate has a huge, huge task ahead of them. So I agree with you, the ones, those dollars are going to be difficult to find. As I've been listening through the WCCA and listening to our congressional delegates talking with regard to the 1.25 coming to Wyoming as well as the HEROES Act coming out, HEROES Act's going to be tough to come out because it's, the belief from our congressional party is that it's a legislation that does not encourage people to go back to work. So that Senate at the federal level is resisting that considerably of approving it. But going back to the 1.25 of the CARES Act, you're exactly right. There's a lot of money there and it's not getting out to the cities, towns and counties as was hoped. But I believe it's truly the caveats that control it as to it has to be for COVID-related issues, expenses and that type of thing directly tied to it. I think our federal congressional delegates are working very hard to possibly get the, all the controls that are presently on it relaxed. So the state has an opportunity to get some of that money out to state and counties who have been impacted by revenue. So with what's coming up for our state legislators, whether it's a special session or whatever it is through interim committees, it's going to be a difficult time. And we're counting on our legislative groups to do what's right for the people of Wyoming. So yeah, there's some tough times ahead. The 105 is very key as well as other things. So I wish you the best of luck. LISRA rainy day account is in jeopardy and I don't know what other accounts there are, but we're checking into that through our local representative to find out what other accounts are out there. But realistically, by statute, some of those may not be able to be touched at all. So I thank you for opening up the floodgate for the opportunity to visit with you. But I, that's how I'm calling it.
Chairman, and you mentioned LISRA and you're exactly correct. The fund is down by about 50%. And of course, K through 12 automatically gets money for their increases that they were receiving this year, we're currently in. And that took about $571 million of it and they automatically get that. So, you know, your 105 comes out of there, but that's a legislative decision. The school's come out of it automatically by law. So there's some issues there that we have to look at and deal with. And small communities always have been an issue and we've got to help them when we can. And of course, a big thing that I've always had trouble with is we eliminated the sale tax on food and we're going to hold you harmless. Well, that never really happened. So that's one of the issues. Maybe next session, the legislature could talk about a little bit. But the good news is Wyoming, and I will share this as a parting comment, is ranked number one in the nation for our ability to deal with the issues in front of us. And we will, and it's optimistic and the cup is half full, but we'll get through it.
Well, and on the final comment, I'm glad you said that about the holding us hold because I think as the state does their cuts, whatever they are, you know, they're coming. To what level? We don't know, but they're coming. I hope the legislative and governor's branches of the state of Wyoming take into consideration that counties are not in a position to backfill all their cuts that they make that impact services throughout the counties, cities and towns. So I, you know, I just, it's not just cuts. It's what is it going to do to these people that are in need and that type of thing? So that's my point that I, and it's just me, takes a quorum of five, of the five of us decide that. But I find it very difficult to be that the legislative body may put us as counties in a position to expect us to backfill because of their cuts. Thank you.
Well, I understand that. Thanks for those comments and thanks all of you for your public service. It's not easy to step up and run and so good for you for doing it. I get that.
Well, and thank you for what you've done for us in Sweetwater County, being a great neighbor, being a great supporter. We hope we're doing the same for you in Fremont County. And you make sure you stay well and be safe and we wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody. See you, Wally.
Thanks, Eli.
All right. With that, I guess we moved into our public comments. So I'll open the meeting up for public comment and that type of thing. So with that, Mike, if we have any public comments come in, Mr. Hart, I would ask that you notify us and please read them.
Yes, there are three public comments that came in on email.
Okay.
The first one is from Peter Tyler about face coverings in county facilities. Although some individuals and corporations endorse the notion of wearing face masks in county facilities, I for one strongly disagree yet respectfully yield to voluntary coverings. We surround a stretch of the busiest interstate in the nation. The apparent increase in numbers is in line with that of neighboring states. Masks won't change the fact we are in a natural transmission corridor. We all know forcing the use of masks in county buildings does not change that fact. If it does, then it can be enforced in all buildings. Then outside in the fresh air, then where will it end? Please consider the fact this is not about a virus. It's not about the economy. It's about conditioning people to give up their rights and freedoms. If it were about a virus, then why haven't we masked up for the common flu? Because the numbers are very similar. Please do not cave into pressure from corporations and other powers that be. Let the citizens be free to distance, protect and cover as they best see fit. Thank you. The next comment is...
Just a minute, Mike. I'd like, before you go on, I'd like to thank Mr. Tyler for his comments and they are noted. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Since you made a comment, I'll make a comment too. I strongly, I strongly support what he just said. That's what I said in our last meeting and I still believe that. I think these buildings belong to the people. We work for the people and I strongly support what he just presented to us.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Go ahead, Mr. Hart.
Okay, the next one is from Eric Soriano titled, "No on Project." Doesn't the fire department already have a building? What's wrong with the building they are in now? $21 million for a new project, so spending money while others are losing jobs and struggling? Why not give a $1,000 check to the community and show your support? And we show support for living here. Not fair to spend money when people can't afford to pay their bills or mortgages, but yet easily spend $21 million on a project to build a new building when they already have a building. Renovate the old one and be smarter with the money. Just my opinion though. Carry on.
Thank you, Mike.
And the third comment is when it just came in from Craig Rude. Craig Rudd, COVID-19 Large Business Relief Bill. Ask Senator DeBout to help get the COVID-19 Large Business Relief Bill passed. It helps spend the CARES money and helps us with our 40% decline in demand and COVID expenses. Thanks.
Oh, thanks Craig for that. Thank you.
That's all of the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. We'll give it a few more minutes in case another comment comes in. Okay, with that, any more comments, Mike?
No more comments.
Okay, I will close the public comment period. And commissioners, we'll move on to our next part, which is Commissioner Comments Reports. And then we'll take a break. Is that okay? And I believe first up, Commissioner Shanefield.
Thank you. I just emailed out a letter. It's kind of actually in line with what Union Wireless is doing with their expansion, but it's from Visionary Broadband and I wanted to run it by everybody to see. It's just a letter of support for them to apply to provide services in our, in our area, in our county from the broadband initiative with the business council. So I'm going to read that really quick and then get everybody's input. So to whom it may concern, the Sweetwater County Commissioners are writing this letter of support for Visionary Broadband's application for broadband funding from the state of Wyoming CARES Funding Allotment. We support their applications for Sweetwater County as this work will support much-needed expansion and redundancy. We welcome efforts from Visionary to improve or expand services in our area. The planned expansion of broadband and communication services is long overdue and bringing adequate services to our unserved and underserved people. Many of our area's households and businesses have far less than minimal broadband service of 25 down and three up, and many have no access to service at all. The availability of fixed wireless or fiber providing services at or above the FCC definition at affordable rates will have an enormous impact in terms of safety, economic benefit and in bringing broadband to our underserved area. It goes without saying that as we prepare for post-COVID environment, adequate broadband has become more important than ever. While we value all current service providers of the region, we recognize that some areas will never create the return on investment needed to provide broadband service to the minimum defined levels without this award. I'm happy on behalf of our county residents and visitors to support Visionary's application for grant funding and we hope that the committee looks favorably upon this request.
Thank you.
Is there any feedback on that letter? And is everybody okay with moving forward with supporting their application?
Commissioners?
Okay.
I know, I, you know, don't want to say it's, just hearing it, I need to process a little more of things. So for me anyhow, to understand.
I'd just like to take a look at it, a little bit of marinate on it for a second. I don't see anything at first that glares as a concern or why I wouldn't support it, but I'd just like to take a second to look at it and think about it.
That sounds good.
Or marinate, as I like to say.
Okay, sounds good. The museum is beginning their process of looking for a new director and that is something that, you know, we're kind of working through and having some conversations around. I did receive a county resident's concern about the condition in the state at the archery range. And so I'm working with Gene on maybe finding some solutions and connecting a few people to help getting that fixed. I'd also like to say thank you to the two elected officials who already turned in their strategic planning documents that Sally sent out. I'm looking forward to working on the strategic planning process starting next month. And I'm looking forward to seeing the rest of the documents come back in from our other department heads and elected officials so that we can move forward with that process. And with that, I am going to be short and sweet this morning. That is all that I have unless there are any questions.
Questions for Commissioner Shanefield? No questions? Thank you. Good report. Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, I just want to start with, thank you, Eric and his department for the presentations today. As always, the way he prepares and their department prepares the, our zoning reports and our zoning, the information review, the zoning request makes it really easy to prepare and be prepared for the meeting and make good decisions. So thank you very much, Eric, and his, and the folks in the Planning and Zoning Committee for the work they do. As far as Lee's Auto Work Library, we met last night. They're continuing to stay open moving forward. They've had a... forward. They've had to shrink their release, cancel most of their in-house programmatic events they do throughout the summer. But Jason and his group has done a great job in doing some outreach during the COVID time. They actually are still doing story times, craft times, toddler times, where they're all doing it online through Zoom. They've also started reaching out and doing their story times at the Rock Springs Farmer Market and the Boys and Girls Club. And they've created some great activities since they don't have the in-house activities going on, like grabbing go bags where kids and family can come get bags for activities to do at home. So congratulations on really looking outside the box and serving in a different way. The Fine Arts Center has also done some events like that where they're doing a weekly art challenge where folks can take pictures of their art and they post it on Facebook. So just a great job to the library and the Fine Arts Center for continuing to program in a unique and different way. The Events Complex Board, we were supposed to meet tonight, but we won't be, but they do have fair coming up. August first is the live auction. It will be a true fair in the concept. There is not the big show, but just the the animal portion and a bridge schedule. And I want to thank Larry and Candy and everyone out there for all their work. Also Marty at 4H and Liz with FFA for all the work they've done to make sure the fair can continue for the kids that have purchased their animals. So go out and support the kids. I know it won't be the normal event, but this is really the heart and soul of the fair is those 4H kids. So go support them and go support them at the auction on August first. Let's see, as far as mental health, we meet next week. But I have been in contact with Linda Aker out of Southwest Counseling. We do know that there will be cuts to mental health and and a cut to their budget in general from the state, at least of ten percent at this time. But they haven't shown exactly what that cut's going to look like and where it will affect. So Linda and her crew are preparing for that and and with their board's assistance. So I know they'll be prepared to make adjustments as they come along, and we're expecting to have to make adjustments there. Starbus met last Monday, and as we all know, that our longtime director, Judy Owens, has retired. So I did give her some kudos and wish her luck the last meeting, but once again, wish some Judy luck. And but Mary Seppi has taken over the director. She was the business person there for a long time, and they have gone away from door to door and moved back to the route system with some limitations still regarding number of passengers on the bus and and keeping making sure they're doing precautions for COVID. Outside of that, I've met with various department heads, elected officials, and some employees, also taking calls through community constituent concerns. And that's really it for liaison work. I do, you know, I do think it's important sometimes to highlight good things going on in our community. And the two things that have really stuck out to me is I read a Sweetwater Now article about a family out of Rock Springs, Breanna Alvey, and her kids every Friday have been baking cookies, baking cookies and standing out and giving them to people and the citizens of Rock Springs as a way of thanking the people and giving back to the people of Rock Springs. And I think little things like that make us a great community. And I'll give some kudos to a guy I don't like to give a lot of kudos to, but that's Robbie Lee from New York Live. About eight weeks ago, he started a series on Facebook called Word on the Street, where he travels the different various small, small businesses and locally owned businesses in the community and does a highlight of those businesses. And and those things, he's getting a ton of shares and information on there. And it's really actually helped out and builds, talking to some of the business owners that he's done, it's helped their business. And I just think things like that are great things that are going on in this community, and it's good to see people doing good things. So that's my report for the week.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any questions for Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioners? Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to thank Judy Owens for the work that she's done over the years. I've worked with Judy, and it's been enjoyable. Judy's always been a very sharp lady and fun to deal with, especially during budgeting times, and she's done a great job, and I wish her well. First, I'll have the Public Works Department report for buildings. The new boilers have been installed on the concrete pads, and the contractor is starting to work on the remainder of the connections. The HVAC engineer drilled the test wells for the ground source, heat pump verifications on the Lagoon Road Consolidated Facilities this past week. The final result final results will be available by the end of this week. This verification is needed to finalize the HVAC design for public works and power station buildings. We started the pre-application process for the USDA Community Facilities Direct Loan Program this past week. This will provide a low interest loan. This will this could provide a low interest loan to Sweetwater County for the construction of the Lagoon Road Consolidated Facilities. We will be meeting with the District Court Judges this this week to go over what is needed to implement the reopening plan. Engineering, SNL Industrial will start striping the county roads next week. They will start on the roads west of Green River. We started reviewing the final budgets for our crack ceiling and chip ceiling projects for this fall and next summer. We are working on the final draft of the fiscal year 2021 CMA application. Road and Bridge, the CMA and dust control projects are still in full swing. We have completed seventy-two miles of the hundred and forty-seven total miles of the roadway. Roadside mowing has started in and around the county during the past two weeks. We would urge that they give the mower room to mow when passing them on the side roads, side of the road, that notice for the public. Parks and Rec, the bicentennial park pavilion exterior walls are starting to take shape. Roof trusses will be delivered in two weeks. We have installed almost forty new permanent garbage cans in and around the various parks to help keep the parks clean and and trash free. That's the report from Public Works. Gene, well done. Then as far as other items that I've been working on, Coalition Local Governments, along with Kent Conley, I've spent a great deal of time preparing prior to last week for the Public Service Commission meeting that was held last week in Cheyenne. The feedback I got after giving my testimony for Sweetwater County and the Coalition Local Governments, along with Kent Conley for Lincoln County and the Coalition Local Governments, went extremely well. Obviously, there is some opposition from the interested parties relative to the testimonies that we gave for the giving testimony to the Public Service Commission to not allow the power plants or at least delay the the decommissioning of the power plants, both in Lincoln County and Sweetwater County until some future date. One of the main points that I made in that testimony was also significant written testimony given is that if you just look at the direct jobs that would be lost at the power plant in Bridger Coal and at Blackbeard Coal, it's roughly a thousand jobs, high-paying jobs, an estimated average at about eighty-five thousand dollars a year. But in addition to that, with jobs that are related to the power plant here in Sweetwater County, it would be an additional three jobs lost for every one at the plant. So you're talking about roughly three thousand jobs lost. It's 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 very obvious to me if this goes forward, after seeing what happened in Fremont County with US Steel shutdown of the Atlantic City Ore Operation Project, which was devastating to Fremont County and Lander, this would be far worse than that. It's it's unbelievable to me what will what the impact that could possibly be if that goes forward as Rocky Mountain Power Plans. And there was pushback from other parties as to our testimony that was was given. But I think all told, we answered their pushback very well, both Kent and I. And and I was very, very pleased to have the opportunity to testify in front of the commission, and and they were it was very, very well received. And and I was pleased to be have the opportunity in the to represent Sweetwater County and the Sweetwater County Commission in that effort. So that's about all I've been working on, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, and appreciate you and Kent Conley being at that hearing in, I believe, with Cheyenne, is that correct, or Gass? And anyhow, but appreciate testimony for that. I'm up next. I also would like to thank Judy Owens and for her services at the STAR. I always, when I had the opportunity first come on the board, I was liaison to the STAR, and that was one board meeting I appreciated going to, because by the time I sat down and opened up my book, I don't know who organized their agenda, but their board chairman was through that agenda within within fifteen to twenty minutes, and they got their business done and got out of there. I always appreciated the fact that they got the right stuff done, and they got it done quickly. And Judy was very aggressive, always looking for grants. And as Commissioner Johnson had said, that come budget time, she was in the fire and, you know, made things work and continued to provide services to assist Sweetwater County. So thank you. In my reports, I would like to just indicate that liaison work continues to be entirely through Zoom and technology and able to be done and work with those groups. So that's been going well. Also, the work through the EOC just basically scaled down. We continue to monitor the patients that come in through public health and the work public health is doing. And Dr. Stations and Kim Leinberger and the Board of Public Health, their plates are pulled, and what they're working with, and on a regular basis, the entire staff, what they've been expected to do through this entire crisis. As was pointed out earlier, there, you know, there's been an uptick with the COVID cases, as well as the community experienced a couple guests. My condolences go out to those families. You got to wonder whether they're unnecessary because of the COVID, but they're very unfortunate. And people not being able to be with family at a time that's critical and very important. It's a sad thing, and a lot of families are experiencing this. But again, very similar to the rest of you other than Wally and Lloyd, liaison work is has not been in depth in that type of thing. So my report is short, and I'll stand for any questions. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And on my side of things, liaison work with the airports, the airport board, they amazingly ended up with a positive on the financials for the end of year, which really is quite unbelievable, being down ninety-five percent for months here at the end of the financial year. Really good job there. So kudos to them and all the work that they're doing up there. The commemorative flights that were up were also a success. And the reason that they were a success was is because of the sponsors that we have that continue to support such a wonderful event. And they said that it's something that's not every community does. They don't have the sponsors that help them out. So they said they're very happy, and they'll be back again next year. So good for good for us to see them around. There was a, well, we won't talk about that. Yeah, I'm not sure I should mention that one. So Devin did meet with our own Eric Bingham regarding the Gateway South impacts, and it was kind of decided that perhaps the airport should start getting on some of the industrial siting meetings and the impacts that some of these projects could have on the airport. So while it might not be applicable to every project that happens, that's one that they're going to look at together. And so I thought that was a great idea to join the Gateway South application, as well as looking at future projects as they come along. The board meeting we had before our last board of county commissioner meeting, so spoke about that generally then, and done quite a bit of work with continuing to work with our different entities and the ambulance. And so we'll talk more about that because of the bid process. We'll speak about that in our executive session. So that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any questions for Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
Jeff, I I still read the Lander paper ever since I lived up there. But in one of the recent publications, they were talking about their airline service out of Riverton. And one of the positives there they were talking about is that they're going to have a direct flight now from Riverton to Denver. And previously, that flight stopped in Rock Springs, and it's no longer doing that. What do you know about that? And what's the impact of that?
Yeah, what they did, because the numbers were so low, I mean, literally five and seven a week traveling back, you know, months ago, it's improved. But what was happening was there was in the morning, there'd be a flight from Riverton to here. And so piggyback off of Rock Springs and then Rock Springs down to Denver. And then in the evening, you would come back the other way, Denver to Rock Springs, Rock Springs to Riverton. And so now things have picked up enough that there will be a direct flight. We have our own direct flights from Rock Springs once again, and Riverton will have their own as well, from what I understand.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Good to know. Good to hear.
In the right direction slowly, but the right direction.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to go up the airport and see the World War Two bombers and talk with those guys. And that was a great, great event that's hosted by the port and the community really came out and supported it. So I'm glad to hear it's continuing. Thank you. Any other comments, questions for Commissioner Smith?
One comment from Commissioner Smith, recyclers and the the contract that I volunteered to work with last commission meeting. Haven't gotten everybody together yet, and that's my fault. So I kind of finished up vacation, got back to work, and that was busy. So we'll be doing that here shortly. Have reached out to everybody for times that we could meet, and we will be moving forward with that and bring bring something to the full commission here shortly.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Appreciate that. Anything else? With that, let's take a break and be back here at ten ten, and we will deal with our first action item under tab C. So everybody here about ten ten, and we'll get started. We'll take a break. Thank you. So everybody here about ten ten and we'll get started. We'll take a break. Thank you.
Wally and I are still goofing around here in my office.
It's all right.
We're gonna finish our blackjack game. I'll be right back.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Will the next action item, does it require a public hearing?
No, it doesn't.
I didn't think so, but I thought I'd ask just to make sure. Thank you. All right, all the Commissioners are back. I'll call this County Commissioner Bean. Take your order and our first action item is with tab C. Twenty-four hour malt beverage permit for K-Motive and Sports Incorporated. Twenty twenty, yes.
You're breaking up and crackling. You sound like me.
Oh, okay. Let me see what I can do for you. Okay, I'll repeat the.
That's better. That's better.
That's better. Okay, I've just got to face my computer, this computer, Zoom computer. All right, under tab C, approval of a twenty-four hour malt beverage permit for K-Motive and Sports.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mr. Stuart Wald of K-Motive and Sports Incorporated would, has requested approval of a twenty-four hour malt beverage permit for an activity on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, which is the fifth annual Pilot Butte Poker Run at Highway four, six, seven, zero, three, seven, four in Green River.
Okay, thank you. Anything else with that? Listen, any questions? No questions, Mr. Johnson?
Pretty garbly there.
Yeah, that's what I was going to tell you. You're still breaking up, Doc.
All righty, see what this will do. Okay, any questions for the Commissioners regarding this for Ms. Lane? Decided. The question, what's your desire?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson. You're muted, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, you're muted.
I was just checking to see whether you could hear me or not.
I was.
I'd make a motion to approve the application for a twenty-four hour malt beverage for the fifth annual Pilot Butte Poker Run as requested.
Here we have a motion to approve the malt beverage request. Is there a second?
A second.
I believe you have to have the chairman sign.
And authorize the chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? Commissioners? I would, I would like to make a comment to say for this time. I have been getting the reports on COVID virus on the positives that are going up. We've had in the county a nineteen percent increase over the weekend. And increases are related to large gatherings. And also they extend all the way from bars to churches, whatever. We've also had through public health and our health officials, we've had a couple of deaths in the county that are directly rated related to large gatherings. And within those large gatherings, there's always been the opportunity for alcohol. And our social distancing, I truly believe they may, may be wearing face covering. And with all the intentions, when alcohol is involved, it seems as though those intentions diminish, become less. And it takes nothing after that for the COVID to spread. One community I read this morning, and I wish I could tell you where, but there's responsibility of one person had an event infected when they back traced it down to two hundred people being infected. For this event, it's a great event for, for the community of Green River. And it's also an event that has done very, very well in the past. But as a poker run that came out of Superior earlier, when we first started opening up, there were several positive resulted in a spread. Our industries are concerned that people participating in these large gatherings will, could possibly come back to work and impact crews to where it will reduce production in those fields even more so than what it is for our minerals. In fact, to the point where our large tonne industries will no longer sponsor any large gathering events just to protect their businesses or their employees hopefully don't, are put in a position or, you know, they're not sponsoring an event that puts their industry jeopardy of reducing production because of crews being put on isolation or quarantine. I'm going to share this upfront that with this permit, I'm going to vote against it. Because I really, really believe those are the things that are impacting the rise and that type of thing. And the alcohol, it's not the event. I think the event's a wonderful event. I'm not opposed at all to the event, but what I am opposed of is what alcohol, when alcohol is involved and people with the best intentions and what they do. I think when there's alcohol involved, people's guards go down. And it does in the long run cause for the spread of this infection. So Commissioners, I think it's fair to tell you that when we do vote, I will be registering a no vote. Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioners? With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. I believe the motion, does anybody abstain or anything? With that, I believe did carry.
Doc, I still break. I don't, I didn't even hear what you said that last time.
About the entire thing?
No, just that last little bit.
Oh, about, about not voting against it?
No, the vote itself.
Oh, the vote itself. Thank you. Let's do this. All I was watching people, I was listening. I didn't hear that many. I heard two yays and myself as a no. I'd like to go back to the vote. All those in favor, please. Okay, I just got a no. Okay, I don't have another speaker. I don't have another connection. Okay, let's finish this and I'll change over my computers. Let's do a roll call vote on approving this malt beverage. We'll start with Commissioner Johnson.
Yay.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yay.
Was that a no or a yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, be careful out there.
Yes, Commissioner Shanefield? Can't hear you. You're muted.
My spacebar isn't working. Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Wendling, no. So we got a four, one vote. Commissioner, give me a minute. I'll change my computers.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioners, can you hear me now?
Sounds good to me.
With an excellent echo.
I got to leave meeting on this one. Is that better?
Yep.
All righty, we'll, we'll go on from here then.
Welcome back to the fold.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for being patient with me. I got to move it over so I can get my agenda. Very good. Okay, with that, let's move on. With that, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Remember, we removed agenda tab D and tab E. So our next item will.
Doc, I can, I can hear you now, but I can't see you.
All right, here we go. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. How's that?
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. How's that?
No, it's kind of better the other way.
Are we talking about the lesser of two evils here?
Yeah.
I deserved all that. My apologies. Okay, we'll move on to tab G. It which is, I'm sorry, tab F, which is approval of the Wyoming class as investment option. And with us is Mr. Slaughter. Rob, floor is yours. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this morning I'm here to ask for your approval in signing a resolution authorizing Sweetwater County to invest in a new local government investment pool. It's called Wyoming Class, which stands for Wyoming Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System. It just came online the second week in July. And basically it is just another local government investment pool, which is much the same as the Wyoming Government Investment Fund or WILSTAR. It's, it's just something to provide the same type of service from a different entity. It is the, the client services representatives who are representing this. I have dealt with for several years in other investments. And it's just simply another option for us to, to use as an investment tool in the future. Not something that I intend to use right away, but certainly something that I think it would benefit us to use in the future. No different than when you approve the banks that we invest in or in the past, having approved those other government funds. Just out of interest on it, Matt McBurnett, who is the Finance Director of the City of Rock Springs, is one of the new board members on this fund. Very, very much impressed with Matt. I really like him. I think he does a great job. So once again, just asking for you to approve me signing a resolution to allow us to use this fund in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
Rob, is that just locally here? Is that state of Wyoming? Are there other counties that are investing in that or what's, what's the exposure that we would have with others?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, excellent question. They currently are setting it up as we speak. My understanding was that it is open to all public subdivisions within the state of Wyoming. They had commitments from several counties for initial deposits to the fund. The, the most substantial of those was Converse County had agreed to originally supplement the fund with ten million dollar deposit. So they, they had asked us to do something similar. I told them I was not prepared to do that at this point in time. I'm not sure their, one of their client services representatives will be here this afternoon. I will find out how much they have actually had deposited in the last two weeks and see where they are with this. But it is something that's open to all of, all of the public subdivisions in the state of Wyoming. And, and they will be using it obviously if it's competitive.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Other questions, commissioners? Other questions? With that, commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the approval of the Wyoming class as investment options? And I believe, Rob, do we have to authorize you to sign it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I would move that, I make a motion that we approve the proposal as presented.
Got them and authorize, Rob.
And authorize the chairman to sign.
How about Rob signed it?
How about Rob signed it as well?
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve the Wyoming class as investment option and authorize Rob Slaughter to sign it. Motion by Commissioner Smith is our second.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Let's move on to tab G. To amend the current six cent special purpose tax and annual reimbursement for Sweetwater County Child Development Center due to recent budget cuts and investments. And with us today is Ms. Pennam, as well as I believe Rob will assist. So welcome.
Thank you, Doc Wendling and commissioners. I'm Kristi Pelham. I'm the Director for the CDC. With me is Kevin Bowman, our IT and Operations Manager. And like Doc Wendling said, Rob's going to kind of lead us off. So Rob, if you would go ahead, thank you.
You bet. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, as, as you're all well aware, in two thousand and ten, we had a specific purpose tax which was approved to fund the CDC. Subsequent to that, we, we fully collected the tax effective January of two thousand and twelve. And per that statute, we then, a year later, dispersed the funds that were in excess of collection on what was actually approved by the voters at that time. Because of the nature of that tax and the short period of time that we were allowed to, to do it and the short, the small amount we were collecting, we actually over collected a little under five million or five point five million dollars. So in January of two thousand and thirteen, an MOU was drafted between the city of Green River, the CDC and the county, which provided for distribution of those funds. We distributed three point three million dollars to the city of Green River. And the county kept two point one four five million dollars of that as an agency fund for the CDC. In watching that for the next year or so, that money sat in an agency account here at the county and earned a money market rate of at that time about point two percent. And when those things happen, it really bothers me. So at that time, I went to the board of the, the CDC and to the county commission with a suggestion that with the county portion which we had taken, that I be allowed to invest that for the CDC. And in doing so, that we would give them an annual stipend. So we would pay them fifty thousand dollars of principal from the balance that we had with the intent that we would also earn roughly fifty thousand dollars in interest each year to get the board about a hundred thousand dollars, which is what their, their consistent request to the commission had been each year at budget time. So it, it was a mechanism to help fund them, but it also took a hundred thousand dollars from requests that we were typically receiving at the time of budget under the twelve mil. Both the CDC board and the commission felt like it was a great idea at that point in time. So we went forward with an MOU to do that. We've been doing it since that point in time and we've actually earned hundreds of thousands of dollars for the CDC in doing so. It's been an excellent program. So for five years, we've been doing that. In, in two thousand and eighteen, in April, the board actually came to, the CDC board came to the commission with a request to change that distribution rather than making a fifty thousand dollar distribution of tax and the interest in June, which we were doing for the total one hundred thousand dollars. They requested we switch and do a distribution in December and requested that we change that to sixty thousand dollars from the fifty thousand dollars we've been previously doing. The board approved that. And so since April of two thousand and eighteen, that's what we've been doing. In looking at the financial markets that are moving forward for the next year or the short term, it looks as if we are not going to be able to earn the same types of returns that we have on their money. We are currently holding just under a million eight hundred thousand dollars, a million seven ninety-eight for them. So I, I went to their board about a month ago and just informed them where we were with respect to this. We made the distribution to them for the interest in June and it was very comparable to what we had anticipated. It was a little over forty thousand dollars. But I'm anticipating for next year that their interest will be in the neighborhood of six to seven thousand dollars with the current interest rates that are available at this point in time. So I, I brought this to their attention. We had a kind of a roundtable discussion on some options with respect to this. And one of the things that came out of it was that they could potentially approach the commission about amending this, this MOU, whether it be permanently or for a short period of time. And I think they have done that. They've come up with a, an option that they would like to present to the commission. So if there are questions on anything that's been done in the past, I would be glad to help. And I think that they're prepared to go forward with what their request will be for the future.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Ms. Kristi, anything?
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and let Kevin talk.
Alrighty, so with the coronavirus impact on the economy of Wyoming, if you are unaware, Governor Gordon has put out an order to cut budgets by anywhere from ten to twenty percent pending any major contracts and we are considered one of those major contracts. And as such, we have taken a major budget cut this year. And so our major worry at this time is if the interest payments aren't able to come back at the normal amount. Our worry is we will have to make further cuts in addition to the twenty percent that we're already making. Our request to the county commission is to maintain the sixty thousand dollar payment that is being made in December. And then in addition, add an additional principal payment in June for forty thousand to still equal out to that one hundred thousand mark. Just so we aren't making any more major cuts at this time due to the fact that right now we have cut so much out of our budget that further cuts, the only place to cut is going to be in employment of employees. And we're just kind of trying to avoid that at all costs.
And I'd just like to further add that we would like to do, try this for two years and then come back to the commission and reevaluate, see where we're at at that time. Hopefully the economy for Sweetwater County and Wyoming turns around and we're not facing the health pandemic that we are now.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else, Kristi, from you and your group?
Nope, I think that, that would be our, our request. If, if the county commission would approve that, we would really appreciate it. So we just leave it in your hands now.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? I, I saw two parts. And one is what Rob delivered as far as the history of where this is at today, plus then there's a request from the CDC specifically. So commissioners, your questions for either one at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
First, I'd like to confirm what Rob stated. He portrayed the history of that very well. I've been involved with that for a long while. And CDC's come a long way as to the requests that they've made over the years. It's it's worked out extremely well and I think this is a reasonable request from them.
Commissioner Johnson, okay, Commissioner Johnson, we lost everything you were saying.
I got it all.
Did you? Okay.
I did too.
Well, you know what? Then the, the connection was again on my computer. So I just hardwired it quick, like, and I think that'll take care of it. So alrighty.
That's, that's been my history. What's really happened there is you had a short, short circuit between the seat and computer board.
There you go. I, I'm, I stand for whatever you, you want to deliver. I'll take it, even on the nose. Thank you.
Well, I get, I get my share of that too. So I got a a little bit, little bit of that back.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I love.
You can't take it, you can't give it. It's good. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Okay, any other questions either for a CDC or for Rob?
I think Commissioner Shanefield and I both had some comments there. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I didn't hear. Commissioners, Shanefield, you go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Rob, do we, do you have a balance of what is in that investment account currently?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shanefield, yes. We, we currently have one investment, which is, we're still maintaining with them. But the, the total balance of that account, as I stated, was a mil, it's a million seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventeen cents.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioner? Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just comment and say that, you know, it's not ideal to be taking away from the principal, but these are not ideal times. And so I do think it's very reasonable, a forty thousand dollar addition, additional withdrawal from the principal is, is very reasonable for our times. And if that's what it takes to get them by, that's, that's really good. I think, you know, we hear a lot of other things that need a lot more money and a lot more help. So I'd say kudos if that's gonna get the job done for the CDC. Nice, nice work and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I happen to agree with you and, and that type of thing. Other commissioners, other comments?
Yeah, I have a question, a clarification and a, and this I think could be answered by Rob or, or Director Pelham. That money that we give is specifically earmarked for building maintenance and such because that six penny was for the building of that building. Am I correct in that assumption?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I, I can answer to that. Because there were questions at the time we originally did this MOU, we asked for an opinion from the county attorney's office and we received an opinion letter from County Attorney Cliff Beavers on this. It was actually June fifteenth of two thousand and twelve that he reviewed that and, and tried to clarify that this certainly would have to be used for those specific purposes which were done under the indenture originally.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, and I will, before I ask my next question, I will concur that I do think, you know, it isn't ideal because you, you know, one point seven nine eight million dollars is a lot of money, but it does go by fairly quickly and knowing that's a long-term building we'd like to see maintained, I do agree that at this point, you know, you're not going to be able to get what you need to maintain that building with the current rate of investment. So like Jeff said, not ideal, but not ideal times. So I guess, so I do actually support moving forward in this. But my question is, is there any, do we need a mechanism or do we have a mechanism to ensure that that money is going for those projects? Or Rob, are we good with the way we've always done it at this point?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, you know, we have, we've had these conversations with the board. And each time that I have met with them, we have discussed, you know, certainly the fact that it does have to be used for those purposes. We have not verified that. I don't know that it's our place to do that.
I agree.
If there were questions, I think it would come probably from the populace who voted for the, the original issue and there have not been any concerns.
Okay. Well, I feel comfortable with that. I can also say I had a chance to talk to Rob about this earlier this weekend. And, you know, listening to his opinion, I do agree that this is something we should support at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other questions, commissioners? If not, I have one or might lead into two, but Rob, going back to when you were sharing the history of it, you mentioned that there was a total amount of dollars overrun and certain about three plus, three point one million went to Green River. And the other remainder came to the county. And we have set up a system based on the request from their board, I believe, or whatever it is to do what we're presently doing. Has, do you know of, or Kristi, this question may be for you or your board over the time, has there been any connection with the city of Green River to set up anything as to status of the three point one? And maybe I'm asking the wrong questions, Rob. Jump in if I'm asking something I shouldn't.
Mr. Chairman, no, I, I think that's a very good question. It's something that we do discuss. As, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we did when we set this up was that we would be totally transparent. And, and that's the reason that I meet with their board twice a year, let them know exactly what we've done, what the interest rates have been that they've earned, where their balances are and things of that nature. I, I do know that they have been working with a couple of the brokers, or at least with one of the brokers that I use with some of their funds as part of that three points, three point three million dollars that went to the city of Green River. I know that there have been some questions that they have had for the city of Green River with respect to, you know, what that money is doing. And there has been some question on the amounts that they've been receiving. It's not something that I'm privy to, but I do know that there have been some concerns from the board and Kristi might be able to address that much better than I.
Yeah, Doc Wendling and members of the commission, about a year ago, we met with uh, we met with Reed over at the city of Green River and we asked some questions as to, um, you know, how the money's been used, if we can have an accounting of the money. Um, if we could talk about investing, uh, the money like we do here with the county. And we did not get very far. Um, they, they had quoted statute prohibits them from investing the money um, and from giving us information. So we kind of just left it at the time and the board hasn't had any new actions, so I haven't done anything different. Evan, I don't know if you wanna chime in on anything because you were at the meeting, but.
Basically, when we were meeting with Chris Meeks, who I do believe is over the financials for the city of Green River and Reed Clevenger. Um, basically what we were looking at is trying to get an accounting of the money and to invest it similarly to what Sweetwater County does for the purpose of creating more longevity out of that money for basically the same purpose that we have with Sweetwater County. With the hopes of preserving those monies to maintain these buildings for as long as physically possible. During that time when we asked for accounting of the money, money, Chris Meeks had basically stated that they do the books by hand and as such, an accounting of the money is not something that is readily available to us to request at the time. At that time, we proceeded forward with asking for further clarification and they basically acknowledged to us that our own record should show what the money was for and when we received monies. And looking at our records, things are not as crystal clear as we would like them to be. And hence why we went to the city of Green River to begin with. At this time, based on the city of Green River's, um, counterpoints on statutes and things that would prohibit them as an organization from investing that money. Um, we've left it alone just because personally, I'm not a lawyer and our lawyer was investigating into that further to see if there's some kind of misunderstanding or other routes we need to attend to with the city of Green River directly, but we have not proceeded forward at this time.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate that update. Uh, this is the first, really in five years I've sat here and heard the request for, uh, changes and that's the first time I realized there was money beyond the money that we had for you. So I, I appreciate that update. It's good information. Uh, any other questions, Commissioners?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Shanefield.
Um, I know that Mister Slaughter explained what we, um, the proposal would be for the amendments, but I don't actually see a amended dispersment agreement or MOU or anything that we could look at and review before approving. Am I missing that? I didn't see one in the packet.
Rob?
Mister Chairman, no, I, I, this was set up by the CDC. Um, I, I would believe that what their intent would be, would be for the, the commission to approve this. And what we did the last time we had an amendment on this is I worked with the county attorney's office and with their county attorney, or excuse me, with their attorney to draft a new MOU, so it was an addendum. So we, we have a current addendum to the original. This would be another addendum we would add to that MOU that, that Mister De Leone would review along with whoever the CDC's attorney is. And then once that's done, you would once again approve that. But the, the basics of that would be, we would fund them with sixty thousand dollars of principal in December. We would pay them a, an additional principal payment of forty thousand dollars in June, along with whatever interest was earned on that for that period of time.
Commissioner Shanefield?
Thank you for clarifying, yep.
Alright. Any other questions?
Mister Chairman, I, I believe, uh, Mister De Leone looks primed and ready to say something and contribute to this conversation.
Thank you. I, I was looking and watching and I'm going, you're right on. Uh, Mister De Leone.
I, I think, uh, the CDC and Rob have said it well. Um, I, I think that, uh, and, and also Commissioner Lloyd, uh, I think addressed all of the points that, that, uh, that I tend to look at. And I think the CDC addressed those very well in terms of identifying that they'd like to be able to use the funds to maintain the buildings as long as they can. So I think all of the, uh, all the issues have been vetted and I look forward to participating in, uh, the amendment.
Alright. Thank you, Mister De Leone. Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I, I, the, first I'd give a correction, I think the world of, uh, Mister Beavers, but he wasn't the county attorney. He was the deputy county attorney. That like Mister De Leone led us, uh, most of the time down the straight and narrow, but he's the one that did that. And I would suggest we do it the same way. Have, have that redrafted. I think we're all in agreement. Uh, you can, you can clarify that, I think, Mister Chairman. Uh, to get that document done and we should approve it, uh, properly.
Sounds good. Alright, so with that, uh, Mister De Leone, do we need a, or Rob, do we need a motion to move forward or do we just, uh, authorize you and then bring it back and we'll approve it?
I think approval would probably suffice at this point in time, Mister Chairman. And then I would think that once the MOU is done, the board would formally actually vote on the, on that at that point in time.
So with that, I would authorize, uh, with the, I've not seen any commissioner not telling you to move forward, so go ahead and move forward and then bring it forth and uh, we'll put it on the next agenda and approve it. Is that okay, Commissioners?
Yes, I, the, this, I'd agree with the way you portrayed it. I don't think we want to approve that till we get the written document.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Rob?
We will, we will move forward. You're taken care of.
Alright, Kristi, is that okay?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you and, uh, good seeing you again. And you guys hang in there and keep doing the good work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day and be safe. Alright, moving on, Commissioners, we'll move into our next, uh, tab is, uh, tab H, which is ratification of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Volunteers of America sub award grant agreement. And here with us is Ms. Marshall, our grants writer, and with her is Ms. Karen Kelly, our director of juvenile operation. Uh, before we go, Commissioners, and we have, uh, Christina on and, and sorry for the moment's delay, Karen and, and that, but, uh, Christina, I, I was failed to mention than as much as mine or anything else, but, uh, we, Sweetwater County was granted, I believe, money through the carers out of the one point two five billion uh, with regard to, uh, expenses related to COVID. And I believe that grant that was sent in, submitted by you and worked on by long, hard hours um, was, uh, presented to the SLib Board along with, we had, uh, had grants from the, uh, Sweetwater, uh, Memorial Hospital, two grants or three grants. One was partial and two were full. But anyhow, they went before the SLib Board this last Friday. And the, uh, grant request that you prepared that, uh, we asked you to move forward on was a, uh, grant request for about two hundred and forty-eight million dollars to improve the county commissioners' room. And my understanding is it was approved. And, uh, good work on it. That's well, job well done. You worked tedious hours. And on behalf of myself and the other Commissioners, as well as, uh, the work that, uh, will go into that room will definitely improve and make things better, I truly believe, for our public. And as Commissioner Johnson said earlier in the meeting, we're here to represent the public and the public needs to have access to our mo- meetings. So thank you and congratulations on, uh, getting that grant for us, your hard work. And it, again, it's no cost to the county. It's coming out of the cares money through the SLib Board of the state of Wyoming, one point two five billion. And then also just to share another note, uh, Jeff knows this as well, I believe, but the hospitals, three requests, two of them for full funding and another one for partial funding also were re-approved by the SLib Board on, uh, Friday through the same, uh, money bank. But anyhow, it was a great day, Friday morning for Sweetwater County, getting some ca- CARES Act money and you were a big part of it and I appreciate your work on it. Thank you. So without saying anything more, um, we'll get back to the business at hand. And, uh, the floor is yours. Welcome, you and Karen.
Okay, well, thank you, Mister Chairman. And just as a side note, we will be going after more of that money. So that's for an upcoming agenda. And of course, the contract will be, uh, placed in front of you. But yep, it's good news for Sweetwater County, especially since that money is not discretionary money. It would be nice if you could say every city, town and county could get a few million. Unfortunately, it is very, very stringent money, lot of, uh, uh, scrutiny from the Attorney General's office, but we will get every dollar that, um, we can get. So so anyhow, um, I have four items on the agenda for you. And Mister Chairman, you get an easy day. There's no signatures required on any of these documents. It's more for public record and so that I could do, uh, budget amendments inside our accounting system. So this first item is ratification of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Volunteers of America subaward grant agreement amendment. So the commission previously was awarded, uh, funding from Volunteers of America. This was for the pre-court diversion program under the Department of Juvenile Probation. So that agreement ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, we saw that not all the funding was going to be, um, expended. And so instead of returning it to the funder, uh, we requested an amendment. So this request is to, to ratify the amendment. Uh, that was signed by you, Mister Chairman. Uh, it was outside of a regular commissioners' meeting because we didn't want the regular agreement to expire. Um, the balance from that award is six hundred eleven dollars and ninety-five cents. Just wanna say not, no funding is too little for us to try to keep inside Sweetwater County. So, um, with that, our deputy county attorney, John De Leone, also was involved in these ratification processes. Um, Karen, would you like to add anything regarding this amendment? I don't have anything to add unless someone has a question.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions at this? Oh, I'm sorry, Christina. Were you finished?
Yes, I was, Mister Chairman.
Alright, uh, Commissioners, any questions for Christina?
No question, but just a comment. Um, I have the privilege of working with Karen and her department as a liaison and and I'm glad to see we can move there, but I, I think we need to give some, um, positive props for Kyle who is in this position. Um, and his pre-court diversion, I'm talking about the correct program, right, Karen?
Correct.
And, um, I think what he's done is fantastic. When I look at the numbers that Karen provided me and the savings that it actually provides by keeping, lessening our attorney fees, probation parole and, um, and the, and, and, and all the other factors that go in. And and I know that we dealt with a grant last time, um, from the state on this that was lessened and it, it, it's, um, it's a shame that due to these grants, Kyle's had to go to a part-time status. And I'd like to keep an eye on this and, and, and eventually maybe have some conversations as a commissioner with Karen. See if there are ways, if, if the grant funding isn't coming back, to look at ways we can help with this situation because I think Kyle's program and the work he's done has been a benefit to many people, you know, lessening the loads in the courts and the attorneys. So I just wanted to note that, that this is a, um, a very important program that is grant-funded, but has had a strong effect in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other comments, Commissioners? With that, uh, no comments, uh, or no questions, uh, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'd move to ratify the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Volunteers of America subaward grant agreement amendment as presented.
We have a motion to approve as, uh, the amendment as presented. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. Let's move on. Ms. Marshall, the floor is still yours.
Okay, Mister Chairman and Commissioners, uh, we're on tab I, just to be clear, uh,
Thank you.
Commissioner Lloyd actually, um, started speaking to this continued project of, uh, pre-court diversion. The last item you approved was just so we can keep the money and spend it in fiscal year twenty. But really, the meat of the issue is this grant. And so Sweetwater County was awarded a Community Juvenile Services Board Grant and amounted fifty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars from the Department of Family Services. Uh, this is for the pre-court diversion program as well, under juvenile probation. So just to be clear, this funding is for the progress made towards the care and treatment of youth in the justice system. When we say the justice system, that is entering the courts. Uh, it accomplishes this by mostly holding the first time juvenile offenders accountable for their delinquent behavior without bringing them into, you know, the whole judicial court system. Um, we, we've been tracking a lot of data over the years, uh, since two thousand and twelve. Eighty-two percent of the participants have not re-offended nor returned to the criminal justice system. Um, and I want to be clear, Karen, uh, has been tracking this for many years. It is a very successful program. So this grant will pay for the payroll costs for one part-time youth case manager. So that is twenty-nine hours a week. Um, a lot has happened with the funding as you have already discussed. Um, this youth case manager had to be reduced from forty hours a week to twenty-nine hours a week, beginning July first. Um, and health insurance benefits were eliminated due to the hours going down to twenty-nine a week. This is because the Department of Family Services modified this biennial grant to a yearly grant and reduced the war proportionately. So usually it's a grant for, um, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars over two years. They made it a one-year grant and cut it in half. Now, in the past, we were able to get a supplemental grant in year two to cover the shortfall. And of course, this year we had no time to do that. Um, so unfortunately, that is the situation. We've been working with, uh, human resources on hours. Unfortunately, if employee goes over twenty-nine hours, they have to be, um, given insurance. To put that person back to full-time status would be approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. So unfortunately, that is the situation. And finally, this had to be signed outside of, uh, regular commissioners' meeting because we wanted it to become effective July first. So with that, do you have any questions for me or for Karen regarding this situation and this grant?
Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Karen, for being here again. Commissioners, any questions? No questions? Take a second. Alright, if there's no questions, commit, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this grant contract?
Mister Chairman, I would move to ratify the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Community Ju- Juvenile Services Board Grant Contract as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussions? No further discussion. Commissioners, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. And thank you, Karen, for joining us today. And be safe out there and tell your troops thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you. Okay, up next will be, I believe, the tab J, which is the acceptance of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one service to victims of crime grant contract, joining us again, Ms. Marshall, along with our county attorney, the esteemed Mister Aramosby.
So Mister Chairman, Commissioners, this is the same theme. Uh, Sweetwater County was awarded ninety-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars in a combination of federal and state funding from the Wyoming Division of Victim Services. Uh, last month, we discussed that it Last month, we discussed that it would be used to pay for two part-time victim witness coordinator positions who also work with two other coordinators in the county attorney's office. And so together, these employees enforce the Wyoming Bill of Rights in Sweetwater County. So as a reminder, last month, you did approve using some of the potential grant match money I have to provide insurance for one of the victim witness coordinators who will be working 32 and a half hours a week. And also, this had to be signed, or actually, this was already signed by our county attorney. The contract requests him as the project manager to sign. So I'm just asking you to accept the contract as opposed to ratifying it today.
Thank you, Christina. Danny?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I thought you said something. I thought you wanted to say something.
Just want to bask in the glow of the virtual wisdom that is the Sweetwater County Commissioners.
Thank you, Danny. We'll, we'll, we'll take that as a gigantic compliment. Anyhow, Commissioners, any questions for either Danny or Ms. Marshall?
Danny is going to be sorely disappointed. That's all I can say.
All right, with no com, with no questions, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this contract?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
I'd move to accept the fiscal year 2021 Services to Victims of Crime Grant Contract.
Commissioners, Mr. Johnson made a motion to approve this contract. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Got a second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving on, we move on to our next one. Thank you, Danny. Have a good one. Moving on to Tab K, which is ratification of the BYE 2022 Community Prevention Grant Agreement Documents. And to present that, again, Ms. Marshall.
Mr. Chairman, this is my last agenda item today. It is Tab K. So we already had two ratifications, one acceptance. Those three were for county departments. This one is different because it's for a pass-through grant that we're ratifying. So Sweetwater County was awarded $486,458 in the Community Prevention Grant Funding from the Wyoming Department of Health's Public Health Division. There is no required match. We had actually discussed this last month. The purpose of it is to implement data-driven and evidence-based substance abuse and suicide prevention plans that impact, you know, substance abuse and mental health in our community. The grant will actually be passed through to Southwest Counseling Service to carry out those activities. We, as a note, the grant agreement documents, which include the formal sub-grant grantee agreement with Southwest Counseling, had to be signed by chairman outside of regular commissioners meeting in order to return the documents to the Department of Health prior to the beginning of the term. I would like to point out that, interestingly, this grant has not been impacted by any cuts at, at the present day. We were nervous that the final contract would. I would like to point out, it is a combination of both state and federal sources. It is a very difficult grant to manage, very complex, but fortunately, they have not touched it. So with that, I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions about ratifying this agreement.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Marshall? No questions? All right, Commissioners, what's your pleasure with as far as ratifying this prevention grant agreement?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Field.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the BYE 2022 Community Prevention Grant Agreement Documents as presented.
We have a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Christina.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, the first thing under Tab L is we got the Joint Powers Telecom Board Addendum to Decrease Internet Pricing, and I believe with us is Mr. Knight.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Knight, joining us.
Great. Well, thanks, thanks for letting me be on the agenda today. I do have a, an amendment to our existing contract with the Joint Powers Telecom Board, which lowers our internet rate and our connectivity rate 15%. Basically, the internet rate's down 15% for each of the three areas that we get internet from. And to extend that agreement for three years. So I think it's pretty straightforward. It doesn't really change anything in the contract other than the price. And that will continue to use the service that we've used for several years. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Commissioners, any questions? No questions. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the agreement, the joint action agreement?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Field.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the addendum to the Joint Powers Telecom Board as presented.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve the addendum number seven to the joint action agreement between the Joint Powers Telecommunication Board and the Cities of Roxbury, Green River and Sweetwater County. Is there a second?
I'll second. Second.
We got a second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our next agenda item, Commissioners, is Tab L A, which was an added, amended to our agenda item, and I believe that too is dealing with a the bid for full data center enclosure. And to talk with us about that is Mr. Knight again. Tim, the floor's yours.
All right, great, thank you. So back in April, we received or accepted bids for, for a full data center enclosure with cooling, uninterable power supplies or UPS's power distribution and containment. That bid came in over $436,000, which was well above what we had anticipated. But also, given that we're coming into a period where budget is extremely tight, we decided to see if we could scale that back to what was absolutely necessary, which at the time when, and currently, is that we have UPS's that are 20 years old. The batteries aren't maintaining a charge, and we have to get those things replaced. So we asked this vendor, since they were the only vendor that bid, if we could just do an equipment plus installation agreement with them. They came back and we were able to put that into the budget. Because the projects changed a little bit. And because this thing has to get done right away, we finally have everything in line. I'd like to sole source this vendor rather than try to modify the project anymore and go through anything that's going to delay this. All the pre-work's been done as far as the sizing and the power things. The vendor is the one who put together the project at the Justice Center, which was done very well. I'd like to maintain the consistency of the platform, the consistency of the support, and keep a vendor that's fairly close to be able to respond to issues. And because we've already designed the whole project, and this is just part of that project, we could continue to do this as monies become available and as, as other equipment needs to be replaced. And so I'm asking that we approve technical building systems as the sole vendor to supply and install that UPS empowered distribution system in the Green River Courthouse.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioners, any questions? None whatsoever? Good job explaining. Everybody, no questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Johnson.
I may have missed this, Tim. How much is that going to cost?
$147,000 was the bid, but I think it might come down a little bit because under construction bid, they charge taxes and we'll be able to take some of that out. So it'll be not to exceed $147,000.
Thanks, Tim.
And as you indicated, Tim, it's already in your budget. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's in the budget.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioners, no questions. What's your pleasure regarding the full data center or Tim's request for equipment?
If you could just repeat, repeat your request and the vendor, I'd surely be happy.
Technical building systems.
I'd make a motion that we approve the equipment building systems proposal as outlined by Mr. Knight.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Johnson to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, Commissioners? It's, it's pretty urgent, so thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Tim.
I thank you very much.
Yeah. Have a good day and thanks for joining us and enjoy your granddaughter.
Thank you.
Congratulations. New one. Okay, Commissioners, up next is Tab M, I believe, which is Print and Digital Marketing Platforms. And here to present, I believe, is Ms. McMichael. Ms. McMichael, welcome. Thank you for joining us. And you're still, you're still with the Rocket Miner, right?
Yes, sir. Owned by Adams Publishing Group.
Very good. Okay, the floor is yours.
And so first up, I have, I have two different things for you. Let me share screen.
So if there's two things, that means you divide the price by two and we get a discount.
I have one thing to sell you on, and then I have one thing just for a little bit of education. So we have our primary election guide coming up. I would like it if you guys would inform the community of, you know, the, sorry, election date and then just encourage them to get out and vote. I know that Mr. Lloyd and I had talked and he said that there are a lot of absentee ballots coming in. But for those that are not voting with absentee ballots, I would urge them to get out there to their polling stations. And so anyway, so the pricing on that is a quarter page is 250, a half page is 450, a full page is 800. Your inside front cover is 1,000, your back covers, inside back cover is 1,000, and your back cover is 1,350.
Okay.
You have choices.
That's good. We'd like, everybody likes choices. Thank you. Thank you, Chelsea. Commissioners, any, any questions for Chelsea at this point in time? We have no questions. We understand what your request. And then with that, I would ask Commissioners, what's your pleasure here?
Doc, Chairman Wendling, sorry, I couldn't hit my mute button fast enough to, to just throw out a comment. I do appreciate all the advertising and that the, the, the Rocket Miner has done for us. And I do think we need to entertain that. And I do this, my comment kind of flows into what Ms. McMichael's going to present next. There are two other media sources in town, including Sweetwater now and YO4 that are also, you know, media platforms. The newspaper and the media platform, the multimedia platforms definitely reach different viewerships and different people. But the, they do have, I believe, a greater reach at this point. And so as we look at these advertising segments, I'd like us to start as a commission looking at other op, you know, looking at spreading around. Not that we have the county amount of wealth, but the county amount of money that we are doing in advertising and these kind of things to the different entities and, and sharing those, those concepts there. Trying to reach different populations but reach a larger population. So just a comment in general.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any other comments, Commissioners, before we move into action? If there's any? Okay, thank you. With no further comments, Commissioners, your pleasure on this. While you're muted, if you're trying to still muted, Commissioner Johnson? Still muted.
About now.
There you go.
There you go.
I did that all by myself, too. The thing we need to realize, I think Roy's right in what he's saying, but you, you've got to reach all of the people within Sweetwater County. And, and this, this print media is just as important as the others that you mentioned. And I strongly support the Rocket. The Rocket's done this for many, many years. And we need to have them continue to do it. I think the only question in my mind is how large of a page do we want to go with? But I strongly support doing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other comments, Commissioners? Very good. What's, what's your pleasures?
Can I make a comment?
Sure, Chelsea.
And the last time we did something with the Adventure Guide and also in the Chamber Map, you did full pages. And that was, the Adventure Guide comes out this month. And then the Chamber Map came out beginning of June, end of May. And you did full pages in both of those. So if you'd like to do a full page, I think it would make more of an emphasis on the community. These are all in color as well, so kind of right there in front of their faces.
Thank you, Chelsea. Appreciate that. Good information, you know. Okay.
So with that good sales pitch, I guess somebody's got to go forward with something. So I make a motion that we approve the request or the proposal for a full page at $800.
Okay, we have a motion for a full page, $800. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, Commissioners?
The only thing I'd say is, we know at election times, it's hard to get people out at elections across the country. And everybody says the best form of government is determined when people show out to vote. So I think any media we can, we can support to get people out voting, it's very important. Because it only makes our government better when more people vote. So thank you. That's my comment on it. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I heard, I think I heard opposed.
Not opposed, I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, very good. So we have the motion carries with four, four ayes and one abstention. Is that correct, Commissioners? Okay, Chelsea, second part of your presentation.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate that. And so Adams Publishing Group does own the Rocket Miner. They own, they also own the Rollins Times, the Laramie Boomerang, and the Cheyenne Wyoming Tribune Eagle. With that, as Mr. Lloyd was saying, we are going a lot more on a digital platform. So I just wanted to bring in what is available now with our digital platform and give you guys a little bit of information so that if you do have anything come up, that you would know that we are, I, I would be your local choice for that. So let's screen share. All right, so our number one thing, I want to point down here to targeted display. With our advertising, targeted data based on search history, preference, purchase history, geographical location. So we can pinpoint all of Sweetwater County. and hundreds of other data points, we're able to create a profile on targeted markets and place those ads on websites and app networks that these people visit. These are just a few things available to us. The next thing I want to move on to is to geo fencing. These are display online ads and they go to audiences based on their geographic location down to a three-foot area. We are able to get people's addresses and utilize a physical address list to create a series of mini geo fences based on the postal address. We then deliver targeted advertising directly into the homes and businesses on the address list with highly targeted banner ads on any device, including connected TV. Connected TV includes your Roku, your Apple TV and your Fire Stick. So we're able, we're able to expand a lot more reach, as you were saying. You know, we, we have, we have our subscribers and we have people that are on the subscriber list for our newsletter, where we have people on the subscriber list for our competitors newsletters and we completely understand this. With targeted display, we are actually able to get that in people's faces if they're not following any three of the, any three of the different competitor medias here in Sweetwater County. And kind of going to skip over this because we are able to do social media management. Sorry, SEO. And down here, things that are new to us as well is targeted email marketing. With this, we do have over seven hundred demographics to choose from. I have just done my first email marketing and it was pretty exciting, but we were able to come up with, you know, I think it was sixty-two thousand different emails just for Democrats here in Wyoming. With that being a red state, you can kind of see that there's probably more than that, but that's just an example of what we're able to do. We're able to target based on age, gender, presence of children in the home, net worth, homeowners, home values, household income, length of residence and a lot more. The way that we are able to collect this data is due to the fact that the internet is always stalking us. And I hate saying it that way because it sounds a little cheesy, but it's true. Anytime you go onto a website and if you, you know, hit the accept cookies button, you're being followed. Your IP address is being followed and your email address is being followed. So we're able to buy those email addresses, buy those IP addresses from our big data server and be able to put those in the hands. We can't give you the actual addresses, obviously. But with our marketing, we're able to put that in the hands of marketers to get their word out to the people that they need to target. So just something quick for you guys and besides that, that's about all I have.
Thank you, Chelsea. Questions for Chelsea commissioners? Regarding this? No questions? I'll just make a quick comment that looks like the Rockets identified a market they got to get aggressive in if they're going to maintain a presence in the news world as well as if the state legislature moves forward to possibly give us as government entities the opportunity to use digital formats as our notices for public and that type of thing. So kind of curious where they're heading. And that was good present, presentation of what, where they're heading, Chelsea. I appreciate it. I have one more comment, but I'll wait until the other commissioners are done. Any other questions, commissioners? That being said, Chelsea, where'd you go to high school?
You were my principal.
I, you know what, I, you just did everything right. I was going to say, what a great presentation, well put together. Where you got your education is nominal. So, but thank you. You did a good job. Thank you for joining us today and, and bringing us forth some options.
Yeah, if, if you ever need anything, just let us know and I am your account representative. So I'll be here for you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
I got to counterpoint that. Chelsea, you, you've done an outstanding job and I think it has nothing to do with the principals.
Doc, Doc was a pretty good principal, obviously. He can keep me out of trouble though, or in class, so.
There you go.
Give him a second. Do we have a vote?
Thank you. Anyhow, Chelsea, thank you and thank you for joining us and you be safe out there. And commissioners, our next item is a board appointment, but I would, and then we move into some other stuff. I'd like to take a ten-minute break and then come back and do, start with TAB M, if you don't mind. Thank you. Can you hear me, Cindy?
Okay. I can hear you. We're working on the screen.
Oh, okay. I thought so because I kept getting a divided screen. Thank you.
Wally and I are almost finished with our poker, so you'll be right over.
All righty. Who won that hand?
Yeah, he's looking good. I got two kings though, so I'm okay.
I think we're still screaming, too.
Looks live to me.
Yep. Is Lauren on? I see. Yep. Okay. Very good. Thanks. Looks like the screen got fixed. Cindy, is Mark in there? Our mic coming?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. We're still waiting for Wally. Thank you, commissioners. We'll call this meeting back to order and the next agenda item is TAB N, Joint Power Water Board Appointment. And commissioners, I'll just fill you in on that to work with the water department due to a resignation of Mr. Kilpak. This will fill an unexpired term for, through March 1st, 2022. At this time, we have two new, we have two applicants. And that, with that, I'd like to remind the commissioners that Sweetwater County's appointment is very, very crucial for this board. For they, that appointment, the Sweetwater County rep is the quorum for that board. They could have four members present and the Sweetwater County rep not present and they wouldn't have a quorum to pay a bill. So it's of utmost that our rep that we appoint is represented at all those meetings. And of course, with the technology that's been employed at the Joint Water Powers Board, whether it's computer or phone, members now are able to make that attendance religiously. So with that, we have two applicants. And it's like I say, it's very important and of the two applicants are both very good. I know Mr. Zebry has had a lot of work. He worked with the Colorado Users Association. And he was, had an appointed position for the state of Wyoming, which last year when I was in Vegas, he did give that position up as to move forward and that type of thing, had a new appointment. And of course, we have Ms. Huckfelt. When you look at her application, her resume, she does represent industry. She does work at one of our mines, Toronto Patch and that type of thing. So after looking at both of them, both would be very good, but looking to the future, I would hope that the commissioners would recognize a recommendation to appoint Ms. Huckfelt. So that's where I'm at with it. Other, I'll give the floor to the other commissioners if they have a comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson.
As you know, I've served on the, Don Van Meter and I served on that board and I, you know, John Zebry has done an outstanding job. He's, he's, he's got tremendous knowledge and has made tremendous contribution to the Sweetwater County towards serving on the relative to our water and water is critical to not only Sweetwater County, state of Wyoming and the nation, but I, I think it's the nation, but I, I think it's time for somebody else to have a look at it and I, I support your recommendation.
Thank you Commissioner Johnson, and I might comment that those same thoughts for Mr Zebry are the same thoughts that I heard as he chose to step down with the Colorado Users Association, so thought very, very highly and he was a contributor, Commissioner Johnson, so everything you're saying is right on, thank you. So, any other comments? Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to appoint Hillary Huckfelt to the Sweetwater County Joint Water Board.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post, same sign, motion carries, thank you Commissioners, appreciate it very much, as we move forward, our next item is Tabal and Ms Berry, I believe, is available and joining us and, and speaking with Ms Berry and that, and we finished a, our budget preparation for this year, but at the same token, I sense and feel it's imperative that the Commissioners visit with Ms Perry with regarding to follow up to that budget session, so Ms Berry, the floor is yours and I'll yield it to you, good morning and welcome.
Thank you, Mr Chairman and Commissioners, we are here today just to discuss, this is just a discussion, the budget and the process that we went through this year, I just wanted your comments and some follow up as far as the pros and cons, any changes you'd like to make, I know I usually visit with you in February or March when I propose this budget schedule to discuss any changes you'd like to make, but I thought it would be a good idea to approach this subject a little earlier now that the budget is fresh in your mind and see what comments you have to make and any suggestions for any changes for next year.
Thank you Ms Berry, Commissioners, floor is yours, first up.
Mr Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
Maybe I should have taken better notes, but it, I do not recall any issues that I had, if I had any questions, I was able to get the information that I needed, Bonnie did a great job of supplying what, what I needed anyway to make sure that I could make an informed decision and I did kind of try to muck things up there at the end, a little bit by meeting with Gene just at the last minute and that didn't go as well as it should have, so I learned from that and I won't be jumping in last minute if I have questions, I'll be doing them a little bit earlier than during a break during the meeting, so in my, my opinion, I think things went well and I can't think of anything specifically that I would, I would change.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr Chairman, a couple thoughts from my perspective, a couple things, I think overall, I'm, I do appreciate all the information that Bonnie provides to us, I think it's very helpful during the budget to guide through us and, and she's always available to talk and so I was able to visit with her quite a bit this budget session, that's appreciated. Couple things I think, that I think could be done differently next budget session is, number one, I think before we even move forward in our budget, our first meeting, we need to discuss what our philosophy as a commission is going to be for that year, are we willing to, for example, are we willing to take out, are we going to be willing to look at, using cash carryover at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the discussion rather than the end, are we willing to go into reserves and if so, how much are we willing to go into reserves, I think having that common knowledge upfront helps us make decisions as we go through the budget, we kind of discuss those at the end, but some of that will affect decisions, I also think, I know we expanded it out a week, I think a little more time could, than, than we did the year before, but I think especially coming into what is predicted to be even a tougher budget year this year than there was last year, I think it's important to maybe even look at time and even start having discussions as early as December, January, because, not in full budget mode, but I, I, I'm fearful with what we're seeing that, and possible some of the cuts we may have to make, that we, that we start talking to some of the outside entities upfront, being very straight and honest of where we're at, so they can be prepared six months before, you know, they, four or five months before they're even putting in budgets, I know we mentioned, some of us mentioned those, and these last time, you know, like, hey, no, next year could be steeper, but I think we need to be defining those for those folks even more and even sooner, and even coming up with philosophies as a, as a commission is, you know, where are our priorities? And I know some of this could come out in planning, but where are our priorities in those things, I think those are important pieces of information that we need to make decisions in a successful budget, so those are just a couple of my thoughts and overviews.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd, of course, feel free to add to that as we go along here, Commissioners, other comments, Commissioner Shanefield?
Yeah, Mr Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Lloyd in that we, we need to start a little bit earlier and I also think with the budget potentially going to be even tighter this upcoming year, I, I would really like to dig in as a group into some of the, the line items more specifically and I know that it takes a lot of time and it's tedious, I don't know if necessarily tacking the meetings on to the end of our meetings is always the best tactic, I think it's good because it only requires one day, but I think that, I think that it wears down the whole process in that we're trying to fit it all into one day, I'd like to maybe take a little time outside of that and see if we can do something a little differently with that next year.
Alright, thank you, so what I think, you know, very obvious what I'm hearing, I, I want to hear what other Commissioners have to say as well.
Doc?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
I'd just like to point out that Bonnie has, has changed the presentation of the variances, et cetera, over the years and she's done a great job with that as far as I'm concerned, she's provided me with the documentation that I've needed, she's done an outstanding job and the, the question about starting earlier, you can't start until you have some idea of where the, what kind of revenues we're going to have and you, you got to have that information before you're going to know how, how far you're going to have to dip into the reserves, et cetera, so, right, I, I agree with the thought of starting, but you, you need to start when you got, you got the information that you need to start that budgeting process, but I can't, I can't criticize what Bonnie's done over the years, I think she's done a great job.
Thank you Commissioner Johnson, anybody else, Commissioners?
Just a clarification, I want to make sure Bonnie knows I'm not, my criticisms have nothing to do with what she presented us and I, and I've actually talked to her about some of my thoughts, it was more of the processes, we ran the budget more and, you know, in our processes of, you know, really not having those discussions of, you know, as we're looking or making cuts, you know, in my mind, are we making enough, are we not making enough, but not knowing if we're going to be dipping into reserves, if that was the whole decision or that ahead of time, makes it kind of difficult to know and predict what we really should be doing without that upfront information.
Thank you.
Bonnie is a rock star when it comes to budgets, I want to make sure that's great.
Thank you, alright, appreciate that, any other comments Commissioners? With that, I, I can only echo that having been fortunate enough to be on this commission and, and work through the budgets in the prior years, counties, you all experienced the quality of work that Bonnie does and, and the, how, how well she knows the budget and Jeff, no matter how you call it, Commissioner Smith, what she did in providing the information in that arena that you chose to look at, as we looked at more of that stuff, she, she really dug into some places to show she knows the budget, that type of thing, so that I, I was really appreciative of as you were and, and the other Commissioners, and so I, I don't think any part of this sitting down, talking about our thoughts is a reflection on what Bonnie's done, I think it's more of a reflection on Bonnie's willingness of wanting to lead through a more thorough looking at the budget, planning and everything and I think about, well, Commissioner Johnson's right, you know, how, how do we know where our revenue and stuff is and that type of thing, well, it's, it's difficult, but I think we can work with our, our assessor and that type of thing and work with our treasurer and work with people that know the dollars and, and that and get some projections, so I, I think we would not get accurate, I don't know how close the estimates will be, but to start working with estimates is better than to not have anything and wait till the last moment and go from there and that type of thing, but I, I do, it does bring some thought to just what Commissioner Johnson said about having, having good information to move forward with it, I, I think as we move forward with it, Bonnie's more than willing to do anything that we were, because she sees herself as working for us as, which in turn is working for the people and, and it, when we do do our budgets, it's, it's a representation of what we do with people's money, I do know, and we all know, we heard it this morning from Senator Beeb out, and we've been reading it, the cuts are coming, they're basing them on the estimates from the Craigs report and to what level they'll be, you know, some of that's been talked about already, but exactly what it is, we'll know more as, as this month comes to a close and the first part of next month from the Governor's Office and in turn, we will know how our outside agencies, our component units and the county could be impacted and that type of thing, I don't know how much this year, but definitely for next year, I do think that doing it with additional meetings would create some obstacles in scheduling, but I think if we narrow it down to having what might be referenced as a budget committee that could work with outside agencies, work with component units as well as departments, elected officials, we could start having those conversations of what their budget looks like at, as these cuts, as we know what the cuts are coming from the government, you know, what's their plan on meeting different levels, I, I know in my conversations, just with departments and elected officials, not component units, but even outside agencies, they're, they're concerned and I think they're looking to us to give them some direction and work with them and that type of thing, I, I also look at and I, I, I don't think it'll hurt to look into going deeper into budgets, into the weeds, you know, because that's, that's taxpayers' dollars and, and you know, those outside agencies should be as responsible as we expect our component units and even component units and outside agencies more so than our departments, you know, the same as our departments and same as our elected people, so if we're all in this together, it's going to take some planning and I think, I truly believe with where the state's going with the budget, it's going to be very, very important that we start looking at closely what they're doing and have a, i.e. if you want to call it budget committee, or if all five Commissioners want to see, sit and meet regularly, I'm, I'm open to either one, I mean, it's, it's, it's a commitment I'm willing to make to the people of Sweetwater County as a Commissioner to make sure that we, we do the best we can for those that can do it, I think with regard to the discussion of philosophy, cash carryover, use of our reserves, I think first of all, we need to go back to and determine what is our finance, our, in our policies, looking at our finance, financing plan which guides Rob and what he does and then what is that threshold that our reserves should be held at, you know, what is a good line and then that will help us determine whether our carryover and reserves, so those, those are good discussions, but I, I think we can get there, partway there, Commissioner Lloyd, with talking, having Rob come in and talk with us and review our investment policies and as he mentioned a while back, as well as we come together as commission and, and define exactly what, where, where those limitations are and that type of thing and I think those discussions should start quickly as soon as possibly the next meeting or we'll rob this as you can, because based on this conversation, it helps me to, to put items for the agenda and then of course you as Commissioners get the opportunity to set that agenda when you approve it, you can remove or add whatever you wish to do, that's your agenda to decide that, so with that, starting early to do it right, I don't think, you know, if we decide to move into based on what we hear from Rod, I think that could determine that, so I, I don't see any part of this of, as a reflection other than the comments of Bonnie, you've done a great job and, you know, times are unique, they're unprecedented right now, so it calls for unprecedented measures at this point in time and unfortunately, budget's part of it, I just want to remind the Commissioners that on Industries calls on Fridays at stakeholder meetings, what I'm hearing from that leadership, especially in the Toronto Patch, is a, over thirty percent less production, which impacts the production tax for not only the county but state of Wyoming and the thought, the belief that there will be, the recovery will not be shown to its fullest for six to eight quarters and who knows, that's today, who knows what's going to be in two weeks, so that's my feeling on it, so I'm open if Commissioners have any more comments, otherwise thoughts? Good educational moment here, take five second pause and let people think, they have a comment. Bonnie, what are your thoughts of everything you've heard?
Um, I, I appreciate the input, it's hard to do a good job when I don't know what you want, so I do appreciate the input and I do appreciate the kind words, I, my thoughts are, with starting earlier, I have no issues with communicating that to the departments, to the component units, to the outside agencies, we do know that we are looking at lower revenues next year, so that's something we can definitely put out there and tell them to expect less, so do what they need to do now to prepare for that, whether it be not filling positions as, as they have people leave just to save some dollars to supplement their decreased revenues for next year, but people can start planning now for next year's budget, knowing that that's going to be a lot lower, we don't know what the revenues are going to be, but we know they're going to be lower, so I don't have a problem with that, I think that's great to communicate that, I don't like starting the process earlier, we did start just two weeks earlier this year and I had a lot of phone calls, emails from people asking what to do because they didn't have their final numbers yet, they didn't know where they were, the budget numbers are going to change constantly and then once they're final, they're final and we just do budget amendments from there, so the budget is just a picture in time, so the earlier we start it, the more changes there are going to be, I think it makes it a little bit more confusing for people when we constantly have so many changes, so in my mind, it's easier just to start it later, start, start the, the process of where we require the budgets due later, I have no problems with putting out there that they're going to be lower, expect to get something lower, work now to do something to get your request lower, but the actual process of receiving the request, I don't see a need to move that up, um, as Commissioner Shanefeld said, she didn't want to have the budget sessions the same day as the meetings, I have no problem with that, we can have them anytime you want and I don't know if they'll still be on Zoom next year, historically, they've been following the meetings just because it's convenient, the commission as a whole is there at the courthouse, that's why they've been following the meetings, but there's no need for them to follow the meetings, it's completely up to you when you want to have them, so I don't have a problem with that, um, let's see, I, I agree with Roy's comment about the cash carryover and reserves, kind of discussing the goal at the beginning, I look forward to this strategic planning that's going on, I hope we can implement the budget as part of that, so we can find out what the fees are, I think I'll better be able to provide information to you for budget if I know what your priorities are. And I think I'll better be able to provide information to you for budget if I know what your priorities are. And then, let's see, what else was just, I wrote, I was taking notes while you were, while you were all discussing some of the things. So Lauren also talked about the line items and digging deeper into those, I don't have a problem with that, I'd be happy to provide you. With any information you would like on that. I do know sometimes, sometimes it's easier to start with a summary and as you have questions, dig deeper. So that's what I've tried to do, I know it becomes very overwhelming if you look at all of our line items because we have thousands of them. Sometimes it's easier to look at a summary and kind of dig down from there, so that's what I've tried to do. But I have no problem digging into the line items. Let's see, what else? Oh, I think that about covered it, I don't know what, what you want to do with the funding request form, whether you think that is. Still the, the information that you want to be provided, I just think as time goes on, hopefully we can get a strategic plan in place and. Have goals so we know what the priorities are for the budget, it hasn't been as needed in the past because we haven't seen times like this. Previously. So hopefully we can get some goals, I think goals are very important. Prior to making the budget decisions. So that's, that's what I have, so from that, I would just like to know what you would like me to do, I know. Chairman Wendling talked about bringing Robin so we can discuss a, a reserve amount, I think that's a great start. And I think there needs to be a consensus on what we want that to be. So I think that's a great starting point. I can come in and meet with you, I know there's discussion about as early as December, January, February. Starting the budget process, we can have those discussions at any point in time, I can communicate to the departments, component units, outside agencies. Any information you would like me to concerning budget, so I would be happy to do that. I just need the direction to do it, so those are kind of my thoughts based on this past budget and just your comments. So basically the question is where? What do you want me to do next and? I guess just direct me through the process to best meet your needs.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Berry, is there anything that Ms. Berry talked about or that, or is there anything she missed or anything? Anybody wants to add with what Ms. Berry's presented or talked with us about?
Just to comment Chairman Wendling to something that Ms. Berry said, and that was the current status of those funding request sheets she sends out. I think they're sufficient, I think they provide the information needed, so you know, Bonnie, from my opinion, I don't think those need to be changed at this point.
Okay.
And I do appreciate the comment about how it would be difficult to get some of the requests in earlier and I do, that starts, that puts in perspective, so thank you.
Well, the date, just to, just to let you know, the date that drives that is there's a statute that says I, that says the budget officer must present the. The request by May fifteenth, so that statute, so we have. Have the request in before the date that I present them, obviously, and I've always done it at the first meeting in May in order to meet that statute, to meet that obligation. So, so historically I've done them, I've, I've had them do late April so that I have time to, to put them together. And get them on the, on the agenda by the due date so that they can be presented in May, so this year we did do it a little bit earlier, I did have. A few people. Call, email me, very concerned because they didn't know what to put in there because they didn't have certain numbers yet, and I just told them to do, do the best they could with what they had. So I just know it's easier, it's, it's easier the later you, you get that information, get those requests, it's easier for all of the. Departments, outside agencies, component units, because they, they have more information and the later it is. And we can always do budget amendments. And, and that, that's my reasoning for wanting to start the, the actual, that process later. Is because it's, it's just going to change and if you're going to have wrong information upfront, it's not very helpful. And I think that for some, it gets very confusing when things are constantly changing and you end up with very different information later. And I know outside agencies, component units especially get very concerned. Because they're due by that date and they don't have as much opportunity to change their request as the departments do. Because the departments, if we talk about a health insurance increase, after those requests are due, it's very easy to go in and just put that in our budget. But unless that's communicated to the component units and outside agencies, it's going to change, it's going to change their request. So it, it's just difficult as, as more things come up, it's difficult to follow all of the changes. So it's easier to get those requests later when people have more information.
So, okay, any other comments, commissioners? Bonnie, I, I think there's two pieces to it, I think it's the request, getting the quest in, as you said, it might be better later for those. And then the other part of it is planning for the budget or planning for those requests and working with. Component units, outside agencies, departments and elected officials, that being another process.
Right.
Up to it, and I think. I fully agree with what you said, lead the forms where they're at, my, where I, what I'm hearing and what I'm trying to process through and I. Is before that of meeting with those groups, vision with them and, and actually start talking individually and getting, getting to. Communicate with them as to what their budgets truly are and that type of thing. And what the requests from us represent and talk about the planning of possible cuts, I think. That's another process that. Would need to start sooner than when we start to process what you're talking about. And that could be done on different meeting days with all of the commission and individual coming in so many at a time, it could be done with a, a committee of. Yourself, for example, and commissioners and some of the department, or you know, just a small committee that will call in those groups, report back to the commission. And that could start earlier, but I think all of it comes together first, it's reviewing our financial policy that Rob has. As well as establishing our belief of where, where is that threshold for our reserves, where's that going to be at? And I think then. Those adjustments will, we can determine if they're going to be reflected in the. Mission and the vision of the strategic plan. When we get working into it, so my big thing I think is, you know, is with the cuts that are coming from the state and with. Our funding. In our budget, whether it's agencies, opponent units and that. I think those conversations have to start earlier with them so they can begin to prepare and know where they're adjusting, they can begin to. See if they have to go after alternative funding sources or anything to make their ends meet. And that type of thing, I think those conversations need to start earlier, so that's, that's where I'm coming at, I'll leave my comments, sit for a second and see if anybody else. Has other comments. Sometimes feel like one eye's going one way and the other one's going the other way. Watching everybody. So without any further comment, then here's what I would like to do unless Commissioner has another ideas, is have Rob come in next week. And I, and if that involves you too, Bonnie, that's great. Leave that, you and Rob, I want to look at the, I, I think we need as commissioners and did look at that policy and try to establish that. Level of our reserves. And then also, I'm, I'm not hearing too much. Of let's not move forward with these other ideas, so I would like to sit at the forefront with you and talk about all this. And see if we can't come together and see, present some options to our commissioners and see if we, as we move forward. Commissioners, is that agreeable or would you have another suggestion?
Agreeable.
Okay, very good, anything else for Bonnie before we excuse her for the day?
Thank you, Bonnie, you be safe out there, look forward to talking to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on for Tab P. We have out of. Gene's office, Mr. Gersky's office, we have a change order. Number one for the twenty twenty Sweetwater County Road four twenty-one bar X road upgrade, so Mr. McGurk, are you out there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, welcome, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, what you guys have before you is a change order number one, the only changer we'll have on this project for the bar X road. And just to a little bit of background, when you decide a project, there's always things that you know you need to do and things that you wish you could do, but you have to fit them within the budget. With this, if you guys remember back in March, at the whole start of this COVID, this one, we did this project. And this was the first one where we really seen a change in the bidding dynamics out there, I had this project budget about four hundred and forty-three thousand. The low bidder came out at two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And so it gave us a little bit of a more room to be able to do some stuff that we know we needed to do the project, but we didn't know if we had enough money. By having the low bid, we did. The nice thing about this with this change order, we still saved sixty thousand dollars underneath the second bidder. And it made a better road, so I would request that you guys approve this change order in the amount shown.
And authorize this chairman to sign?
Correct.
Okay, question for you, Gene, I, I missed that amount, what was the engineer's estimate?
The original engineer's estimate was four hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions, commissioners, questions for Mr. McGurksky. Without any commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this changeover and authorizing chairman's sign?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
Very familiar with, with, with. Mr. McGurksky has done with this and he's done an outstanding job on that road and I make a motion to approve the change order as requested and authorize chairman's sign.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, we have a motion by Commissioner Johnson and authorized chairman's sign is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd, any further discussion, commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries, it's going through, Gene.
Thank you.
You're welcome, keep up the good work, it will be a better road, appreciate that. Moving forward, Tab R, or I'm sorry, Tab Q, the Lagoon Facility project, I think at our last commissioners meeting, commissioners had some questions regarding. Or said they had some questions regarding this project and so I put it on the agenda and asked Gene to be here, so. At this point in time, I'll open the floor up to commissioners for questions on the Lagoon project.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Phil.
I spoke with Mr. McGurksky after our last meeting and, and just kind of gave him some of the information that I thought we needed to discuss, can we just turn it over to him and, and see if he can share some of that?
Sure. Gene?
Yeah, so basically. If, if I remember your question, one of the questions correctly, it's, it's kind of where are we in the whole process? And right now, we're in the first phase of basically really a two-step process. Where we have went out for solicitation and SOQ, which is statement of qualification for pre-qualified contractors. That's been out for about two weeks right now, the neat thing about that is we have seven contractors interested in this project. And I think that's a, a statement to what's kind of going on, not only in the region but the state and nationally, nobody knows where. Basically their next paycheck for contractors is going to come from. So August fifth, we'll be accepting those statements qualifications, August seventeenth, we'll be interviewing those and hopefully narrowing them down to. Pre-qualified bidders, not everybody that has taken an SOQ would get pre-qualified, however, the seven. That we do have, I'm very familiar with them, and they're large contractors, they'll probably be all pre-qualified, but we'll still go through the interview process to make sure that they are and we can get the best. Contractor, pre-qualified contractor list that are be willing to bid on this. August twenty-fifth is when the full construction documents will be released to those pre-qualified contractors. On September third, we'll have a mandatory pre-bid for the pre-qualified contractors, all their subs. September seventeenth is when bids are due for this project, so that's when you guys will get your answers. And October sixth, we're hoping to have negotiated price and the lowest responsible bidder will be presented to you guys for an award. Ms. Shane Phil did ask if we put this on hold, how much would it cost to rebid the project? I've consulted a lot with the architects and myself. Right now, in order to rebid this, if we just continued with not having to do the SOQ process again, it would cost about a thousand dollars. That's just basically advertisement. You know, the one thing that we can't guarantee in the architects, I talked about this a lot, I mentioned in our last meeting, is what that costs us in real estate out there with the contractors. And that's always one of those things which is unknown, you know, I, I remember the last meeting, I told you guys that my number, if I had a bit of project again, was always ten percent higher. We don't know where that is because we don't know where the economy is going, it might be the same, it might be higher, it's definitely not going to be lower. One of the interesting things about this is since March, right now, we've seen about a five point three percent reduction in construction costs. And that's just because people are hungry. The last bid that we had that you saw was a road project, you can see that that was almost thirty percent lower than where I projected it out. I don't think that's going to be the case with this building, but it is definitely going to be lower and you can see that by the national trends. E D A just recently bid a twenty-four million dollar office building in Orem, Utah. And the bids came in at four point one percent less than what they originally thought. The interesting thing about that is the difference between bidder one and bidder two was less than one percent. So that means that you didn't have a wide range, one and two or one percent, you had really tight bids and really competent bids. So that's kind of what Commissioner Shane Phil and I had talked about, if there's anything else or if I didn't cover it, Commissioner Shane Phil, please let me know.
Mr. Shane Phil, any other questions?
I think the only other thing that Mr. McGurksky and I talked about was the amount of effort put in. On his part already and moving forward and also the amount of effort that our contractors that are going to be putting these bids in, if we aren't. Planning on moving forward and I'm not, not, I mean, that's, it's my, this is my thought process, is if we're not planning on moving forward and we're having the conversations around, is this the right time to do this project? I don't want to waste everybody's time and efforts only to rebid it again later, I don't think that's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Comments, commissioners? For Gene.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I think we'd be making a mistake by not pushing forward, at least to the point where we see what those contractors are willing to bid on those projects. I think there's been too much work gone forward. These contractors are hungry. There's a, a need for jobs in, in the county right now, they understand that and if they're willing to bid it, let them bid it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Smith.
Gene, you mentioned and perhaps I missed there, got a little girl in the middle, but if we put it on pause right now to, to start the process again and rebid or. Have initial bids, would only cost about a thousand dollars for advertising.
That's for advertising, our part of the, paused it right now, the design drawings wouldn't be done, so we'd have to pick up the design drawing process. And that's hard because the longer you sit on a project, the harder it is for, to familiarize yourself, you know, right now. There's about twenty-seven people working on this project, not myself and staff, I mean, from structural engineers, mechanical, electrical. Architects, landscape engineers, everything, you know, we usually typically just see the architects, but there's a ton of people working behind the scenes. So to get that cohesive group on a page again is going to cost something and we don't, really don't know what that is. You know, because it, it's hard to tell. So yeah, the design drawings are a critical thing. And, and to get done, so we, we need to do those and if we're there to do that, I think we should bid the project.
So what's it going to cost us from here to move forward through the bid process and get a bid numbers in in October?
Right now, they're just below over thirty-three percent through the design drawings and you can see by the. And you can see by the Oc- August 25th deadline, they got a ton of work to do. Now, that's through June 30th. Um, so they have, you know, uh, basically half of this month, they've done everything, and then the rest next month. So about six, three, four work. Um, and then the bidding SOQ process, everything like that is four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. To, to get us to that point, you know, which seems like a ton of money, but we've already spent almost three quarters of a million dollars to get to this point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still of the opinion that, uh, I'm, I'm the guy that likes to gather information and then make a decision when there's a decision to be made. And I kind of feel like right now, we, we don't, uh, we don't have everything we need to make a decision, an informed decision anyway. So, you know, I, I press forward. I'm not, I'm not at all saying, yeah, we need to build this right now, but I am, I, I do feel like we need to go through the bid process and find out, find out where we're at. And, uh, perhaps it's really good news. And it's like, wow, that's a, you know, chance of a lifetime we can't miss on. And perhaps it's, uh, what we thought it was going to be originally or, or more, or, you know, who knows what other hurdles may come in the way. But I think, uh, my opinion, we just, we need to press forward and make sure we, um, finish this portion of it, and then we can make a informed decision from there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one of the things about that is that, uh, the design team and myself have been working very hard to try to make sure that you guys get the numbers. Um, typically, when you bid a project this size, it's lump sum, um, which will continue to be lump sum, but we're going to actually have four different base bid lump sums in this. So you'll get the combined both facilities plus all the site work in one lump sum. It'll be bid as the public works building with the site as another lump sum. It'll be bid with the fire station alone and a lump sum. And then I'll have other bid alternates that if we have enough money, uh, we would like to do on the project. So it'll be a very good way to tell exactly, you guys will have the right answers, uh, for you guys to make an ed- educated decision.
Thank you, Mr. McGurksky. Any other questions, comments, commissioners? I'll make one, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a question how good the project is and how good, uh, a price we can get or any of that stuff. I think the real question comes down to, and I'll just throw it out there, is this what this commission wants to, at this point in time, at unprecedented times, feel they want to draw their reserves down on, knowing there may be demands on those reserves for other things? I think that's the real question in regard to the Lagoon Project, not the project itself. Not that we're going to get a better price. What I'm hearing is a project's a good project. Nobody's questioning that. But I think the real crux, and I, and I've been processing it and trying to sort it out, it's finally come to me. I sense that there's a question of, is this what we want to spend our reserves on, that type of thing? I think if there was alternative way to fund this without using the reserves, might be a different discussion. But that's where I believe I'm hearing, and I think that's what needs to, uh, set the tone for the project. Because the only way it's going to get done, because it fell through with the, uh, getting the loan because of the BLM, the way that, uh, determined that we couldn't borrow any money. So then, like Commissioner Johnson says, it lies all on the reserves. In unprecedented times, my question is, is this the time to be spending our reserves on a project with everything we know that's coming down the pike? It's the only question. It's not whether the project's good, it's not whether we could afford him under normal times to do what we're doing with revenue steadily coming in. I'm sensing the real question is, and I'll be honest with you as commissioners, if we're thinking about pausing, if we have a majority thinking about pausing, this is the time to do it. Period. There's no reason to go on any further. Those are the hard conversations. That's where it's at.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I might muddy the waters a little bit.
Please do.
That. Um, and Commissioner Johnson hit on this in his comments this morning. Um, I've been working on the very early stages of a USDA community facilities direct loan, um, to supplement that. I've talked to the people in Casper, and we're in the very early stages of doing that. Um, they're excited about the project. Um, you know, they can't guarantee anything yet until we get going. One of their main questions was, you are in Sweetwater County, your population doesn't, um, for one, meet the threshold. And when I explained what the buildings were and that we took care of the 99% of the majority outside of the population centers of Rock Springs and Green River, she told us to proceed and go forward. And I have met with other departments, and, uh, we are gathering the information right now to submit the initial stuff to make sure that we qualify for that.
When, but when will you have, when will you have knowledge of the status of that?
Early October. Um, she said she might be able to get us to something in September before that, uh, but not a confirmed number till early October.
When you say a confirmed number, is that amount of money?
Yes.
Is there, and this isn't a, this may not be a fair question. If you can't answer it, please tell me you can't. But do you have an idea of what kind of money we're looking at?
Um, when we initially talked, um, because I didn't want to commit the board to anything, I stuck with our original number that we were giving the bank of borrowing 10 to 12 million dollars. And she wanted to know where we were going to get the other money from, and I told her that we were planning on pulling that out of reserves. The interesting thing about that is because of COVID and how we kind of missed our deadlines, we were supposed to be on a construction about this time. We're obviously not going to be because of COVID and trying to get meetings and ship files that are 250 pages long over the internet and everything. This is going to be a little bit later. So the interesting thing about that is instead of being in two physical years, we'll actually have this money come out at three physical years. Um, you know, and if you look at a project this size, um, the drawdowns are a true bell curve. You know, so you'll have, um, 30% of the money, 25 to 30% of the money coming out in the first physical year, 40 to 50% of the money coming out of reserves in the second physical year, and the rest of it coming out in the third physical year. We know for a fact that the third physical year will be retained of at least 10%. Um, and more depending on what the contract is. So that does muddy the waters just a little bit, and I apologize for that.
No, don't apologize. I think commissioners need all the information they can get, even though we know it's, it's, uh, just a grab. It's a possibility, you know?
It is. And one of the interesting things in talking with carryover of the USDA, um, she, we talked about other funding sources. And she actually, which was the first time I've ever heard this, she goes, it's actually good you guys got turned down by the banks. Because it gives us a little bit of armament that's, that says, hey, you guys fit for this, and you guys have actually looked at other ones, which I, I've never heard that before, um, in talking to anybody. I always felt bad about it. Uh, but she actually, that was almost her exact words, is because you guys got turned down, this makes you guys a better fit.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that, Gene. That's, that's good information. I think everybody appreciates it. Um, but I, yeah, I will say it goes in line, but there's still has to be that conversation. And then I, and that, what you shared makes Rob's presentation or his work at the next meeting, and even it goes into a couple more meetings. Very important dealing with not only our, our financial investment policy for the county, but also where's that threshold for our reserves? Because it's, still comes down to, um, whether or not the real question, still comes down, no matter how good everything looks, on these unprecedented times, commissioners, are you willing to spend the reserves with what you know that's coming down the pike and what we may be expected to pay? I just look at this year's budget and it's well-known fact, and I, Mr. Johnson, I think you brought up in the last meeting, that reality, even though there were carryovers, we were still $9 million shortfall in our budget. Thank God we had carryover we could use, which protected, which protected anything that we brought in from reserves. So we don't know what that carryover for next year, it should be less if we used it for this year's budget. So, yeah, it still comes down to that question, commissioners.
Uh, Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I'm listening to you. But I disagree with you strongly. You're saying we should make that decision relative, relative to the, uh, reserves at this point in time. I disagree with that. I think Jeff said it right. I think there's a time to make that decision, and it's not now. We don't have the facts in front of us. And I think we go through this project to the point of where we've got the bids in, we can look at those bids and make that decision whether we're going to dip in the reserves at that point in time. We will then know what our opportunities might exist for, uh, uh, financing on it as, as outlined by, uh, uh, Mr. McGurksky. There are people working very hard on this. And it'd be, it's unfair to the people that are working on this at this point in time to shoot it in ahead. We need, it is not a question whether we want to pull it out of reserves or not at this point in time. Let's get the facts all together. Let's go through to the point where we have bids coming from the contractors, and then we can decide whether, where we want to go with it. If we make that decision today, I think it's, it's, it's unfair to all of us that have worked so hard on these projects. You talk about the planning process, and you want to have this meeting, you're going to have, you're going to talk about it on, on the next agenda. That's, what do you think we've been doing for the last 14 years? How do you think we reduce for, uh, over 70 positions to reduce this? This is long-term planning, and we're not through yet. When you talk about the budget, for example, you shouldn't worry about what the budget numbers are. What you should be worried about, what are you doing to reduce our costs? I haven't heard anybody talk about that. I'll tell you what, one of the things we should be doing is looking at another early out for our employees and reduce our, the size of government even further. But budgeting is nothing more than a looking at the project that we see coming down, the costs that we see coming down the pike. And, and you can, you're going to, you're possibly going to have two different commissioners by the time you're to the point of making this decision. Who knows what the voters are going to say? They're going to judge us as to what we've done. And I'll tell you, the history of the commissioners I've worked with have done a great job of that. That, I think the last number Gary showed me was 15 million dollars we've reduced because of what we've done. What are you going to do as a commission to reduce the costs in the future? The only thing you're looking and focusing on is this project. This is an excellent project. Prior commissioners thought it was an excellent, excellent project. And let's take it to the point where the proper decision can be made. It cannot be made, in my opinion, today. Jeff said it right. You've got to have all the facts in front of you before you make that decision, or you're going to make a bum decision. That's my opinion.
Well, thank you for your opinion. And that is one option, and nobody's disagreeing with it. There is the other options that I'm hearing from other commissioners that need to be listened to as well. And their considerations are also cost-cutting when you deal with looking at the budget as well as you're looking at an opt-out program. Previous commission has done a great job. The one thing the previous commission has not been handed that we are presently handed today is unprecedented things that are going on with revenue and the, not only the state, county level, but the national level. So there are a lot more things to look at. They have done a fantastic job. Where those other commissioners are experiencing is in their own jobs right now, where they run their own businesses and the impacts that they may be taking. They're looking to us as they have done in the past, not only to look at the cost, cutting through the present way of whether it's, uh, a buyout program, but as well as to look into those budgets and make sure that money is being spent very wisely and money that isn't, get it back into where it can support the taxpayers. In this case, I don't disagree with you. I'm just making sure all the commissioners have an option to reflect what they're thinking and reflecting and letting them know that they can make an option, and there are options there. And what if I hear what I believe they're saying, I need to make sure that that avenue is, is investigated for them as well as for any other commissioner. I'm not saying you're wrong, and I'm not saying anything else about that, but I'm saying there's options there. And commissioners, all five of us are on an equal scale, and nobody said anything different. But I'm going to make sure that all the commissioners, if there's an option they want to investigate, want to talk about and bring forward, it's going to happen. You're exactly right. We will be judged by our voters in regard to how we run this county and how we handle the finances. And that, in my mind, is the true judgment. And I'm willing to, as you have always said, come voting day, judge, judge me, and I will accept it. But I'm not going to sit back and not allow our other commissioners to also exercise any options. And I don't hear you saying not to do that. I'm hearing you saying, hey, consider this option, and you feel strongly and passionately about it. I haven't in any way, shape or form played that any less, Commissioner Johnson. You and Commissioner Smith both feel that way. I want to make sure that as we move forward, all commissioners, including yourselves, continue to have input and have all the information to make a decision when they feel they want to make a recommendation. So I, I respect and I feel your passion, and I have no problem with it. We can, we can work wherever this commission, as a majority wants to go and how they feel about it. So with that, any other comments, commissioners?
Chairman Wenling, I'd like to chime in. Um, I'd like to continue this discussion. Um, I think after we talk with Rob and Bonnie and come up with a, a point of where our, we think we should cap our reserves, I think that's important in this discussion. Um, I, I personally walked through these projects with Gene about six to eight months ago when this first came up, and maybe it was longer than that when it first came up. I do see the need for the project, but I, I, my struggle with the time, and I'm sitting here going, I, I don't disagree that we should get the bids to see if we should move forward, but I'll be honest, I really struggled with moving forward. And, um, um, if the costs are in that 18 to 22 million dollar range, I just think it's harder to plead our reserves at a point. Um, there are other discussions that could happen. I think Gene's looking at some alternative fundings that are, could be important to look at. I also think, do, do we need to get to the point where we say the engineering building's important? And we can definitely hold on a, uh, the fire department longer. There are options we can have. But I'll be honest, I just really struggle with going that far down in the, in the, in, in the, um, uh, potentially that far down. And I do agree with Commissioner Johnson, what are we doing to, to reduce the budget? I know we did talk about, um, I know Commissioner Johnson, myself, and I think other commissioners talked during the budget process, is it a time to, um, um, to look at the early buyout? I think that's a definite discussion we have to have as a commission. I also think we need to look at other things as, as we, as we look at every position that comes up, we need to scrutinize the heck out of that to make sure it's a needed position. We need to look at where we can find efficiencies, where can we go more online, where we can look at things like that. There's a lot of things we need to do to reduce the budget, and I think these are great discussions to happen. Um, but I also, you know, right now, I think we're at 34 million dollars in reserves after the five we go. If we were to take 22 million dollars out of the reserves, that would take us down to 13 million. And by a lot, Bonnie has said we had to have eight. That's a scary point for me. And that's just the, the true wisdom. I'm willing to sit and listen to maybe potentially get the, but the bids and see if some of these other things unfold. But if we're taking reserves down that far, that, that, that's scary. And I got to be honest, I haven't had a taxpayer come to me saying, man, we should move that to that building. Every taxpayer that's came to me has said, it scares me that we would take our reserves that down. And that's not me asking questions, that's people coming to me. And if we represent our taxpayers, and I have people stopping me at Smith's or wherever, or calling me and making those comments, I think that's something we have to take a look at. Do I agree there's more information we could gather? Yes. Do I also agree we need to continue to look at how to downsize and create a more efficient government? Absolutely. But in this one conversation, I do concern with how far that would take our reserves down. And to me, it's the bottom line number. We do this project to 22, and it could come in less. We're taking our budget down to what we can't go down below, between below five or seven million dollars, and that's a scary point.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. And I think, uh, Rob will, Rob will be able to provide some guidance to where we as commissioners can look at those and see what we said and did at the next meeting, okay?
I also think Bonnie can provide some pretty vital information in that area too, in her opinion, his budget also, within reserve amounts, both between Rob and Bonnie. And I also want to think, I, I actually, Gene and I visited last week for 30 or 45 minutes about this project, and he was able to answer my questions. And, and then I do appreciate the work that everyone's put in. And, and, and sometimes, unfortunately, good projects have to be put on hold because of situations. And this may be one of those situations, but, but I, I'm interested to hear what happens over the next couple of weeks.
Agreed.
Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to respond to something Roy said there.
Sure.
And listen to what Gene said. What Gene said is the bidders, bids are going to come in for one building, either building or all buildings. So you're going to have the information you need. And I think that's a, that's a legitimate question. Should we be? Should we be building two of them? Or let me back up. Should we be building any of them? Should we be building one of them and that which one should we build? Or is there a way to build both of them? You just can't look at the twenty million dollars in the in it's coming out of reserves because you're going to have that option. As as to how much you want to take out and where's it going to go? That on the point I'm making is you can't make that decision intelligently today.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner Smith, you've been trying to get on. I'm sorry.
Oh, good. No worries. Yeah, again, I'm hearing a lot of what ifs and maybes and 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 I think that's exactly proves the point of. We need to wait and find out. Let's get the information that we need. You know, is there going to be other additional funding that we can we can use? And if that funding works, you know, certainly I'm I'm feeling. Squeasy to about a twenty-two million dollar project that would all come out of our. Of our reserves, that is hard to swallow and that's hard to say yes to. But that's not our only option. And and I think there's a lot of other options there that we need to weigh, but we don't have that information yet. We don't have the price. We don't know if there's other funding. So again, I think that just totally proves my point of. Let's press forward and wait and see if we can make a decision in October when when we know a little bit better about the pricing. Perhaps, of course, just time is going to, we're going to know more about the economy and and what's going on there. So. I I just don't see any reason to to pull a trigger today and say. Kill the project. We're we're done with it. Let's uh. Let's find out for more information and make a good decision in the end. That's my.
Go ahead. No, and I I would agree. I would agree with that. And I I think what Gene had to offer really. Pays pays attention to. To. Seeing what's 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 going to be there. Um, my main goal is to make sure everyone of you as commissioners have an opportunity to voice. What you're thinking and what your thoughts are and to make sure that that occurs. So. Any other comments for or questions for Mr. Legursky? All right, we will though at the next board meeting. Commissioner meeting, we'll have Bonnie and Rob aboard for. That little for that hopefully to set that to review that financial policy as well as. Begin the conversations of setting a. Where we think our reserves ought to be.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Like me to get Bonnie and Rob a drawdown schedule over the three year, two and a half year project showing the different physical years on it? Would that help them out?
I don't know. Why don't you talk with them? I don't know if it's if it will or won't. I think what's important is for the commissioners to decide where's that level at. You know, and if it ties into projects and that type of thing. You talk with Rob and talk with Bonnie with that. Commissioners, do you want that information?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's very important to have.
All right, let's have it.
Would you like to break it down for the whole project? Two buildings, one building? How would you like to see that?
Yep. Same way.
Same way. You need to do it by building.
Gene, so I think the answer is yes.
Yeah, all of it. Good catch on your part and good question. Thank you. Anything else for the commissioners? At this moment, otherwise we'll move into our last item and it's under other. And under other, we added Eric to come and talk with us. With a discussion of recent legislative change to Wyoming statute concerning family exemption subdivisions. So Eric, are you up there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. I'm ready.
All right, thank you and thanks for waiting on us.
Not a problem. This this won't be too long, but I had a discussion with Commissioner Johnson the other day. About some recent changes that happened to the statute. And how it's affected some residents. Well, it affects all the residents of Sweetwater County. That own property and and the unincorporated areas and so that the public's aware, but. We have a thing. It's called a family exemption in Wyoming. And if you own property. For a certain amount of years, you can deed it off to your kids. Basically is the way it's set up. So if you own, let's say forty acres somewhere and you wanted to deed off. Five acres to your son, you could or daughter, you could do that. And what it was is you had to own the property for five years. And then if you owned it for five years, you could deed that off. And the thing with the exemption that you have to understand is. It's exempt from the subdivision regulations. So. People do not have to expend the cost of going through subdivision. Dividing their property, which can be expensive, twenty fifty thousand can get into six figures. Depending on how many lots you're splitting off. So it's a it's a great provision for the for all residents in Wyoming. And this affects everybody in Wyoming, but I want to speak on behalf of some of the residents of Sweetwater County that have come to me. And that were working with me in the last three or four years. To do a family exemption correctly. And then the legislator changed the law two years ago. And they changed the provisions from the five years to ten years. So we have individuals that now have to wait another five to six years. To subdivide their property. The other change that they made. Is once you've deeded that off to. Your kids, you they could have to hold on to it for one year and now it has to be five years and that that can complicate things when. Some, let's say your kid needs to move out of the area because of a job or such, they can't sell it off for another five years. So. Mr. Chairman, what I would, what I'm asking the commissioners today is to. We could write a letter. Looking for suggestions on who that letter should go to, whether it's the Wyoming. Commissioners Association, usually the corporations committee. The Legislative Corporations Committee usually deals with these matters. Or we write it to our local legislators, but something I feel needs to be done at the next legislative session. To to bring it back down to the way it was. Either that or put a grandfather clause in there, something to. These affected residents that were planning on. Deeding these properties off and some of them are due to some health things that have come up. But that's what I'm asking today, Mr. Chairman, is that. We and I've spoken to Commissioner Johnson about this and just wanted the discussion of whether we could move forward. With a letter to maybe even have all the commissioners sign it. Going to our legislators to hopefully get a change. That's what I have, Mr. Chairman, open for any questions.
Thank you.
I've been involved with this for a long while and and got to the point where. The five year thing was a good deal. And and there's a lot of merit to that. And what I suggested to Eric is we bring it to all of you for your input on it because we, in my opinion, we have to do something. And my suggestion and discussions with Eric would be. We send it to our our local legislators who are responsible for looking out for us. And that includes the people to have these big have ranches and farms in Sweetwater County because that's who that's who's going to get. Get affected the most. And I I also suggested that we. This letter go to Wyoming County Commissioners Association because. That body, they surely would recognize the the problems that they're going to cause for the primarily the ag industry. And so I I feel I feel strongly that we need to do something. But it's I think the commission needs to look at this and see what they think as to. How we draft that letter and who it goes to.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioners?
And I I'd support a letter, absolutely. I think that's a. Good idea. Don't know much about it, but certainly take the lead of Eric and Commissioner Johnson. And their. Their advice and their take on it, but it from what I understand, it sounds completely reasonable to lobby the other direction.
Thank you.
I would concur with that.
Okay, Lauren, you're shaking your head. Commissioner Johnson, I first of all, I think if if. You and Eric come forth to us and find something that we need to work on and approve. Be hooish to list not to listen, and I agree with you. We need to move on, but I I would like to maybe suggest two step, two additional steps. Eric, which which subcommittee generally handles these?
It's usually the corporations committee, but you know. I don't know if that's a definite for sure thing. I I think I Commissioner Johnson's suggestion of the local legislators. Is a very good idea and the Wyoming Commissioners Association. The corporations committee does meet in September. But I don't know for sure. I know they usually do do the changes, but. Sometimes they mix things up and it's the ag committee, but it really should be in the corporations committee, but I don't know that for sure.
All right. The only reason I ask is I know those committees are meeting. On a regular basis. I just didn't know when that committee met and you take care of that. I. I agree that the letter should go to our local guys as well as WCCA, Jeremiah, that type of thing. Also, I think. A letter to that. Interim committee. Corporations as well. And then there's one other thing is let's make sure. You know, if it's possible, give me a copy of that letter. I will do some calling to Jeremiah. And find out. What exactly? If there's any opportunity to get it before any other interim committee. Yet this summer, because sometimes my observation has been that. I see things come in that weren't assigned to a committee and they do take them on. So if I have a copy of that letter, I can go with Jeremiah and strategize with him. My question to you is. Do you feel you have enough talking points that you can testify along with WCCA if it's needed? To a committee?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, because there's two things, you know, my observation is even though many times it's wrong. Is that. There are opportunities to get it yet this interim, so it goes before the legislators. I have also observed that during the legislative session. There have been. Opportunities of thing of things of this nature introduced and being acted on it. But thirdly and lastly is. We work with Jeremiah to find us a legislator to sponsor that action. Or that amendment to the statute. So. Let's work on all corners. I think you can prepare a letter and and. Commissioner Johnson, would it be best of all five commissioners sign it?
Oh, yeah, we talked about that without a doubt.
Okay, we'll do that. So if you want to work with a letter for. With Mr. Johnson, bring it forth, we'll. Work would take it up as an agenda item. And sign it. And then we'll start working it in in those different avenues if that's agreeable.
That sounds great, Mr. Chairman. I'll have it for the next board meeting.
Anybody else have a better idea to do it or something to add to it? Commissioners?
No, I just want to add, I like I like Eric standing at his desk. It's kind of like. DJ Erico, you know, looks, he's looking good. Whatever he's doing back there. It's a good look. It's a good look, Eric.
It's it's always. It's always a class act with Eric and the rest of the employees, so.
I'm staying healthy.
All righty. What else do you need, Eric?
That's all I need, Mr. Chairman.
For you, Commissioner Johnson?
No, that's fine.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Eric. Let's move forward. And then commissioners, I. I sent you a little chat that I passed over tab R. Which is strategic planning with Lauren and Roy, so. We'll entertain that at this moment. So I'll put Roy and. Lauren, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'll just kick off if that's okay, Lauren. I don't want to kick back to the the disagreements we had a few minutes ago, but I. I think the hope of the strategic plan is to avoid those things and having us all on the same page. I think. One of my hopes within the strategic planning is. New commissioners come on. We can kind of hand them, hey, this is where we're at. And we know those plans can change at any time with different commissioners, with different philosophies. But I think by having that unified plan that's written down and and gone is the way to go and. And things will change, but I do think it's a way to start. We have received feedback from two different entities. Two diff, well, actually two elected officials. We're waiting for the rest. I have talked to. A a couple of the other department heads who I know are working on it. What I'd like to do is maybe in August at one of our meetings is to look like an hour workshop setting to start the discussion. And really start to talk about. Where we want to go with this and what our vision is and kind of what my vision is. Is and 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 a lot of this actually kind of kicking back to the last negative issue is. A lot of it stemmed from discussions when I walked and looked at the maintenance buildings with Gene. And we were talking about different models of planning and Casper has a great model and. They actually have a list of like one through thirty projects and different things. And they look at that project list and they move things up and down every quarter or whatever is needed as things change is those are our priorities. And I think. And you know, and things could change. You know, I was talking with. With Assessor Devis yesterday and. You know, an example could be we may not even have the court, a court, a new courtroom on the agenda. But we may get told they have to have a different district court judge and that might all of a sudden vault to number one on our list. So our goal was to create some concepts of what the what our vision is, what our goal is unified as a county. And how to prioritize those projects and not only just capital projects, but other things that may have to be done. And so that's kind of where we'd like to go. Lauren, anything? Anything to add, Lauren?
No, you said it very well and I I I'm excited that Bonnie is. Ready to be a part of the process because I think it's a huge, a huge part of the planning for the future for our. County and ensuring that we're utilizing taxpayers' dollars in the best way possible.
So that's and so Doc, you could pick either one of the meetings in April, maybe an hour workshop after we're done. I think workshops more in a laid back environment to have that open discussion. No decisions have to be made at this point, but I just think getting people in and I think we can find ways to create efficiencies and you know. Commissioner Johnson talked about, you know, what are we doing to downsize the finances? This might be an avenue to have everyone sit down together and kind of find concepts to make that happen. So. That's that's kind of where we're at and what our thought process.
Okay, so going back to what I heard first off is. A workshop with with commissioners and whom?
Department, let's start this first one with department heads and elected officials.
All right, that sounds good.
And I think the next time we meet, we bring in the maybe every other time we meet, we bring in component units. I think they need to be part of that discussion also.
All righty. Well, we'll look at, let's look at the first phase that you're recommending of. Meeting with them and you'll have a. Process procedure, kind of, I'll call it a design plan, ready to go to follow through. It's got to be an agenda, kind of like here's this what we're going to start. And basically, here's our objectives of where you want to go with the strategic plan, you and Lauren.
Yes.
Okay, now the real tough next question is, and I heard this and I was listening really, really careful. Can any of us as commissioners determine? Which workshop, what day in April that you want to meet for a workshop?
I prefer not to wait, meet in April because that'd be a long wait. August would be great.
You said.
We all had one of those moments today, so either or would work for me.
You know, Wally missed that or he'd have been.
I I want to meet on a in April.
I wanted to talk before Wally did because he was getting a motion for April, so.
Well, you I think what amounts to is, you know, workshop is something we can all be at if someone can't make it. You know, it's not a require me, so we can do it after a meeting, do it in August if that's your desire to kick this off. Make sure we invite the people you wish there.
And I'm thinking maybe the second meeting in August. That way we have. Time to be able to disseminate the data we get from the rest of the people to send it in and we can share that as part of the process, Doc.
All right, so I want you and Lauren, I I would, okay, you're saying you're asking for the second. To. Third Tuesday in August, a workshop after our meeting. To begin the conversations and establish through the strategic plan. Is that correct? Okay, is any commissioner? Whether you can make it or not, that isn't an issue. It's just a second. Meeting in August, third Tuesday for a special meeting after a regular meeting. Will that work? For strategic planning? Okay. Roy, here's what I'd like you to do with Lauren is make sure that. You visit with Sally. She have a good title for that workshop. So she can advertise it with our agenda. I'll look at it after you get it done with Sally. But if you set it up. And the workshop to start and we'll make sure it's streamed as well because it's open transfer. Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, Ms. Oh, you know, yes, Ms. Lane.
Um. The August eighteenth is election day as well, so. So you know that.
Ooh, ooh, ooh. Roy, Lauren? Roy, Lauren? Can't keep, you can't keep putting it off.
No.
What, what'd you say, Jeff?
The election? We can't put off the election?
Oh, we can't.
I believe eighty-five percent of people already voted by then because of all the absentee votes that I, I. Clerk Lane is setting out, so.
If we can notify them soon enough, they'll, they'll get their voting done. Would you agree?
I'm good with it, if anyone else is.
Cindy, do you have the capacity to be at our meeting? I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna take additional, that, that, I think that was more her concern.
Okay, I, I see it. I, I didn't see it. Thank God Lauren's on top of it.
I mean, I don't have to be there. I guess it could be a day that if I'm not invited, but I will be busy that day and. I'm not sure who I could get to cover for the extra length of time. I know we'll have it for that morning.
And I, and I will share, remember the first. Tuesday in September, we have hearings for.
Equalization.
Board of Equalization that start that Tuesday right after our board meeting. We need to keep that board meeting short.
Maybe Commissioner Lloyd and I can meet with Cindy ahead of time. And get her input for this first meeting. And then we can move forward with the other department heads and elected officials for the first meeting and then, and. Cindy can get in the, the next meeting that we have in a month after that.
Okay. This is new to me, so I'm going to ask, go to John DeLeon, can, is the clerk required to be at any workshop that we have or not?
I mean, I think she can have a representative there.
Okay, thank you. All righty, let's, let's go ahead and still plan for that. If we put it off, we'll keep putting it off and. I don't want to do that. It's, it's important to get it started. So let's plan for the third Tuesday in August following our board meeting. We'll start. Working on that based on your plan and design, Lauren and Roy, okay? All right. Anything else with the strategic plan, people, commissioners? Okay, with that, moving on with our agenda, I believe the next item is executive session and it's a legal update. And I'd like for that session when we go into it is for John DeLeon, Marty Dernovich. I believe, is that all we need, John? I don't, is commissioners have anything else besides legal update, any personnel or anything?
We will chat a little bit regarding ambulance.
Yes, that's legal contracts. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Got a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shanefield. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Go into executive session. We'll take a ten-minute break beforehand.